Good morning and welcome to the New York City Council hearing of the Committee on Children and Youth. At this time, can everybody please silence your cell phones? If you wish to testify, please come up to the Sargent at Arms desk to fill out a testimony slip. Written testimony can be emailed to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Again, that is testimony@council.nyc.gov. At this time going forward, no one is to approach today. I repeat, no one is to approach today. Thank you for your cooperation, Chair. We are ready to begin.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm Councilmember Althea Stevens, Chair of New York City Council's Committee on Children and Youth Services. Thank you for joining us today for today's hearing on evaluating the Close to Home program. This is the first, this is our first ACS oversight hearing since the committee gained your ejection over the agency. I look forward to building a collaborative and productive relationship with ACS since I know our goals to support and empower young people are aligned. The Close to Home program is a community-based alternative to young people who found, who were found reasonable for committing a delinquents act by family court system. Close to Home participant receive rehabilitative services, including family visits, mental health care, recreational activities, in a residential setting close to the community in which they live. This initiative was established in response to its 2008 New York State Juvenile Justice Task Force recommendation. The task found that the community-based facilities led to positive outcomes for youth and more cost-effective than detention facilities. As we engage in a thoughtful review of the programs, I think it's important that we don't lose sight of the task force findings and goals of Close to Home. Despite the passage of Raise the Age and an influx of family court cases, the administration's FY 2025 November budget plan reduced Close to Home's baseline funding by 7.2%, citing underutilizations of the program. Additionally, Close to Home providers have expressed concerns about their ability to hire, retain, and protect staff while maintaining a welcome environment for young people. Specifically, they have raised concerns that their ability to pay staff a fair wage to do this demanding and difficult work. Part of today's discussion will center on the impact of these cuts on both youth and providers. The committee looks forward to gaining a deeper understanding of the program from ACS today. I'd like to thank committee staff Christina and Elizabeth and Kari, Casey, I'm sorry, for their hard work in preparing for this hearing, as well as the entire A-Team back in the district office who's having a great day at the Met with community members. So I'm really excited about that. Too sad I'm not there, but it's okay. Now we'll turn it over to committee staff to swear in the administration.
Hi, good morning. Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to council member questions? Thank you. You may begin when ready.
Good morning, Chair Stevens and members of the City Council Children and Youth Committee. My name is Nancy Ginsburg and I'm the Deputy Commissioner for the Division of Youth and Family Justice at the Administration for Children's Services. I oversee the full range of services for justice-involved youth and their families, ranging from community-based programs, engaging youth and families in their communities, to nonsecure and secure detention, and of course, our Close to Home program. I am joined today by Johann Pagaro, the Associate Commissioner for Close to Home and Nonsecure Detention. There are two types of Close to Home facilities: nonsecure placement, NSP, and limited secure placement, LSP. Nonsecure placement facilities are home-like settings typically in retrofitted brownstones that look much like group homes. Limited secure placements have more security features such as a control room monitored 24 hours a day and properly maintained perimeter with motion sensors and security fences. In 2023, 111 youth were admitted to Close to Home. Eighty-eight percent of the youth were males and 12% were females. The admissions were 61% African-American, 27% Latinx, 3% white, and 5% Asian. Youth age at admissions ranged from 13 years to 20 years old, with 73% of the youth being 15 to 17 years old at the time of admission. Ninety-two percent of those youth were placed in Close to Home for the first time. The median length of stay was 218 days for those youth released in 2023. In addition, in 2023, the average daily number of youth receiving Close to Home aftercare services was 31, and a total of 105 youth participated in aftercare. Close to Home providers are required to implement evidence-based therapeutic program models that serve as a primary mechanism of behavioral support. In addition to the providers' evidence-based program model, ACS requires that the youth-level-of-service case management tool is integrated in programming. ACS and our providers have fully embraced programs, interventions, and strategies tailored to each youth's individual development and learning capacity. Through the chosen program framework, youth are given the opportunity to address their interpersonal relationships, communication skills, emotional regulation, and achieving the goal of eliminating and reducing concerning behaviors. Most youth in Close to Home receive their education through Passages Academy, operated by the New York City Public Schools. Youth in nonsecure placement attend school at Bronx Hope or Belmont in Brooklyn. Youth in limited secure placement attend schools at the facility. Youth placed at Children's Village attend the Greenberg School on the campus in Dobbs Ferry. Passages Academy supports middle school, high school, and high school equivalency instruction. Passages Academy's school counselors and social workers provide guidance counseling, special education services, and transition support when youth return to the community. Upon entry into Close to Home, youth are evaluated by New York City Public Schools and then placed in a class program that matches their needs. While most youth are in Close to Home placements for less than a year, the youth are successful in earning school credits and passing Regent's exams. In the 2022-2023 school year, 65 NSP youth were enrolled in Passages, 88% of whom were in high school and earned an average of 7.1 credits. Eighty-six percent of students earned 10 or more credits during this time. In the 2022-23 school year, 25 LSP youth were enrolled in Passages Academy, 92% were in high school, and an average of 6.7 credits were earned, and 73% earned over 10 credits. These students also passed a total of 16 Regent's exams. When there are youth in Close to Home who are college-ready, we work with New York City Public Schools for CLAP classes, engage with community colleges for courses, and some youth attend college courses in the community. The programs offer you, these programs offer youth an opportunity to engage in programming that promotes pro-social skills, vocational and academic engagement, creative and performing arts, and positive adult peer mentoring. Close to Home providers partner with Cure Violence providers to train youth to be junior credible messengers. The program Exalt helps elevate youth voice and provides job training skills. Kite Creative Writing helps youth write and showcase their work. Carnegie Hall offers workshops, musical trainings, and public performances. Most recently, ACS has added the successful Fair Futures coaching model to provide youth in and leaving Close to Home with coaches that can remain with them until age 23. Youth remaining, returning to the community typically receive at least six months of aftercare supervision from ACS and support from their Close to Home provider. As mentioned, youth also now have access to a Fair Futures coach when they return to the community, which a youth can continue to lean on after they complete our program. Most youth in Close to Home successfully transitioned back to the community. In 2023, 92% of the youth admitted to Close to Home were admitted for the first time, and just 2% of youth admitted to secure and nonsecure detention had previously been in Close to Home. In March, ACS announced the providers recommended for awards for the new contracts starting July 2024. The providers include Children's Village, Good Shepherd Services, Rising Ground, SCO, and St. John's, who will operate a total of 14 sites with 147 beds. Notably, the original Close to Home contracts predate the implementation of Raise the Age. Today, the youth in Close to Home tend to be a little bit older and often present with more challenging needs. The new contract awards aim to strengthen the Close to Home system of care by rightsizing the system while providing the providers with additional resources needed to care for the post-Raise the Age population of youth and their care. Program capacity was decreased from 13 to 9, allowing for more individualized programming. The new contract budgets were increased to fund specific lines to help improve the overall programming and offer a more robust treatment approach. The lines now include funding for Fair Futures, an educational and career specialist, a Fair Future coach, a Fair Future supervisor, aftercare staff, a crisis specialist, aftercare supervisor and peer mentors, a recreation specialist, an increasing staffing ratio of 3 to 1 from 6 to 1, an intake coordinator, and a mental health team required to include a therapist, psychiatrist, and substance abuse counselor. To address permanency issues with our older youth in our system, ACS created a transitional program referred to as a Transitional Residential Care, or TRC. Youth entering the TRC will be provided with supports which encourage personal growth, development, and empowerment to make mature and healthy decisions. The TRC will also offer youth case management, educational and vocational services, and will help them connect with a variety of community resources to enhance their co-design personal development plan, and most importantly, help youth achieve permanency. The TRC will support the goal of serving youth in the least restrictive, most home-like setting possible, and is due to begin in July. I would be remiss if I did not mention that when Close to Home was created, it was a cost-sharing partnership with the state, where the state funded approximately half of the cost, which was $30.5 million. Unfortunately, after the initial statute sunset in 2018 and the statute was reauthorized, the state eliminated all state funding and support for Close to Home. ACS continues to feel strongly that the state should support New York City youth emplacement as they do for any other youth emplacement for any other county. That said, at ACS, we are excited about the future of Close to Home and the work that we can do with our providers to help turn the lives of youth around so that they can thrive and become successful adults. We believe our new contracts build upon the success of the Close to Home initiative and that we will now be able to better serve the older population in our care. Thank you.
Thank you. And you did such a great job summarizing, I tell you, you did really great, so I want to shout you out for that. But let's jump right into it because I have a number of questions. Before we get started, I would like to acknowledge my colleagues, Councilmember Menon, Councilmember Williams, and Councilmember Lee. Thank you for joining us. Please explain ACS' relationship with family court. What factors or rubics does the family court system use to determine whether a young person is a candidate for Close to Home programs?
ACS does not have a role in the family court process. The family court holds juvenile delinquency proceedings where youth are represented by attorneys and the city is represented by the law department. The court holds a fact-finding hearing to determine whether or not the young person is found to have committed the act. If the young person is found to have committed the act, there will be a dispositional hearing. At disposition, the judge determines whether or not the youth is to be placed in a Close to Home facility. The judge also decides whether that facility should be nonsecure, limited secure, or unspecified, meaning that ACS determines the level of placement. And the court, during this process, the court listens to testimony, reviews the probation report, possibly a mental health evaluation, and then determines the least restrictive alternative. ACS is not part of that process.
So yeah, so thank you for that answer and for clarifying. But I would love to hear just a little bit like, what is the relationship like? Because that's the role, right? And so it's very clear that you guys don't have a role in that. But what does your relationship look like with family court? What does your communication look like? Do you guys meet? Or is it just all just separate? They just call you and it's time for your piece? I would love to hear a little bit of like your role and relationships that you guys work together with currently.
Yeah, so sometimes the judges reach out to us. They have questions about the continuum. Sometimes during a hearing, they may ask for a member of the Close to Home team to come into court to explain the various services that are provided across the continuum to help inform their decision-making about where they will order the young person to go on disposition. We, we do have periodic conversations with judges in the family court, and so we use those conversations as well as their ability to call witnesses from the Close to Home team in the dispositional hearings to ask the specific questions that they are looking for information about that specific young person to ensure that the program matches the young person's needs.
So ACS does offer some insight sometimes to family court judges regarding placement of youth to Close to Home. Okay, great. Please explain the difference between LSP and NSP. How do those programs' safety measures differ? Because even when you are, when we were doing some digging and research and even when I was talking to providers, they seem very similar and like, it was like little nuances. So could you just like kind of talk about like what the real differences are? Because like I said, when we were, when we were doing research, it, it was like one stays in for school and the other one doesn't, and that was like kind of the difference.
The physical plant itself is very different, right? So like we were saying during the testimony, there's a control room that actually operates and opens all the doors throughout the building in our limited secure facility. So you cannot just go from one, like, let's say, to like a rec space to...
So are you talking about the LSPs or the NSPs?
The LSPs.
And we should probably just say the whole thing because it took me, I'm just learning these things and I know there's people here, and I'm not sure if my committee members are also familiar with all the terminology because there's a lot of jargon, and I'm also learning.
And our, and our limited secure youths are not allowed to leave the facility for any reasons. So even unless there's a medical emergency, so their medical is done on-site, dental, education, the programming's at the building. Our LSP, I mean, our nonsecure facilities are able to go into the community. Their education's in the community, services, medical, mental health could be out in the community. So there's a, the big difference is the restriction around how they're able to interact with the community.
And so there's very limited activity because even with like, even with the NSPs, although it's, it's, they go out to school, what other activities are they doing? Because when I was talking to providers, it didn't seem like they were like out in the community or any of those things. It was still very restrictive. Is it the movement in the building?
No, it's, it's a lot more, there are providers that go on trips. They take, they go on events with the kids. They may take their kids out to a local restaurant or...
Oh, I didn't hear any of these things.
Yeah, they, they do a lot more than just that, you know? And they're, and they're able like into, they're able to individualize the youth plan. So like if a kid wants to get a job in the community and they reach the level where they can trust the youth, that kid can actually go work and come back.
That is not the impression I have gotten on this tour that I've been doing and talking to providers. So I, because I want to distinguish if they're able to do it and if it's happening. Because I think that that is a good distinction because I know, and we'll get into some of those questions around funding, because even with that, that requires additional funding. And so we'll get into that a little bit later, but I want to be clear from the conversations I've been having, that has not been the impression that I've gotten. So, but we'll get into that a little bit later. Is the agency tackling with communities and Close to Home participants come from? Is the agency coordinating with other agencies like DYCD to ensure that the community has consistent members of Close to Home program participants receiving resources and support?
So ACS does know what communities the youth come from. In, in 2023, 111 youth were placed in Close to Home. Thirty-seven were from the Bronx, 27 from Brooklyn, 10 from Manhattan, and 24 from Queens, five from Staten Island. The neighborhoods that were most represented were Mott Haven and East New York. ACS is intentional about providing these informational sessions and participating in community events in these neighborhoods so families know how to access our FAP, community-based alternatives, which are preventive, at the preventive end of our continuum. We also, we work closely with DYCD and share information about where court-involved youth come from. DYCD has programs in these communities such as Cure Violence. We also work closely with DYCD to ensure that all youth currently are previously receiving services from ACS, including prevention and FAP. Are prioritized for recruitment through the Emerging Leaders Program, which served a record number of youth last year. Additionally, DYCD conducts targeted recruitment across priority precincts, working with CMS groups, NICA, and other city agencies. All youth residing in priority districts and NICA developments are prioritized in the program lottery. Do you want to talk about after school?
I have some questions before you even go into after schools because this is one of the things that I've like have been harping over for the last two years because even with DYCD, a lot of these young people are in not just, so because I want to be clear, CMS is probably, it's one section of DYCD, and they just got that. But they have a host of programs where young people are at. And so how are you guys communicating at that first touch point even before the kids get to you? Because I think that that's another piece that I feel like it's a huge disconnect where we have these programs where, you know, we have Saturday Night Lights, which everybody know I'm not a fan of. We have Cornerstones, we have community centers. How are you, but that's the first touch point. And so are we tracking to see like, are those kids enrolled in those programs even before they get to you? How does those communications happen?
So I don't think we have that detailed of what you're referring to, reference to like the community services that they're asking. We do know kids that come to our care that have been involved within our continuum, like JJI or the FAP program, and, and those kids are receiving preventive services from some of our community providers. So we wouldn't know that information. The more specific information that you're asking, we, we're not, unless the kid shares it with us, we, we don't really have a way to identify that.
Yeah, and I think we need to get to a place where we are, right? Because the reality is all of these programs should be preventative services because the, the goal should be for young people not to get to your facilities, right?
Yes.
We don't want them to go there, right? But I think if we're not having these conversations about what that looks like, it's a continuous cycle, especially it's two city agencies. And so this is something I've been talking about for two years, and, and welcome to my madness. So you guys will see, and I'm not going to let it go until we figure this out. But I think that it's really important that we're thinking about how do we use these other places as touch points so we can prevent them from going there. But I know you wanted to talk about after school, so.
So I was just going to mention that DYCD offers after-school programming for our District 79 schools and who we partnered with the Community, the Center for Community Alternatives. So they, and they also provide the Cure Violence, as you are aware, as well as they also help with the aftercare piece when it comes to Cure Violence and Community Alternatives.
I just want to go on record again, DYCD just got Cure Violence, so we can't use that as a touch point for the, the information. They only been there a year.
No, well, they were with MAGJ.
Exactly. So like even when we were talking about that, I just want us to make sure we keep that into perspective. But according to the 2023 RFP, contractors must maintain a no-rejection/ejection policy for referrals of young people during the term of their contracted award. Providers have reported pressure to accept all referrals. Are young people ever turned away because a program is full to capacity? And if so, how many accepted referrals were turned away in 2023?
So our youth don't, do not come from the... Hello?
Yeah.
Our youth do not come from the Children's Center. All of our youth are held in detention pending disposition. We do have a no-reject/eject policy, but if a provider has concerns about a youth being placed in their programs, we have conversations to learn more about the reasons that they may have. Luckily, we have not had the experience in any of our providers being at capacity. Also because youth are placed by the family courts, we do not have the option to turn any youth away from our Close to Home program.
So I just want to make sure we clarify some things because you said you don't have a reject or eject policy.
Oh no, we do have a, we do have a no-reject/eject policy.
Yeah, yeah. So you can't reject them, but if, so what's the point of the conversation? Because if a provider can't reject them, or I'm voicing a concern, they can't reject them. So what is the conversation about?
They may make some good points about maybe they read the youth documentation.
But if you tell someone, you can't deny them and then say like, well, let's have a conversation. It seems...
Yeah, but it, it's a productive conversation because...
But if I'm a provider and I just, and this is a perspective, right? You are also their funder, and this is the thing that I hop on a lot with DYCD. You're their funder and they're the provider. So how do I come to you and have a conversation and saying like, this isn't a good fit without feeling like I might get in trouble because you've already told me that I can't reject or eject them? And so even in that, that sentiment, it's flawed. And I think we need to think about what that really looks like because it's really hard for someone to come to their funder and be like, this is going to be... I'm just saying.
I mean, I, I don't fully agree with that. Like, we have providers that have multiple facilities. So they may tell us, no, don't place him at this site. We believe he's going to do better at this facility. So we would change the recommendation.
I'm going to tell you, I was a provider for 20 years. It is hard to have a conversation with your funder. And sometimes those difficult conversations, so they might say, let's do, go here or whatever. But I'm telling you, it is, that's something we got to think about, right? Because it is, you are still their funder. And so there's limited pushback that they can give, and especially when you already have a policy that said you can't reject or eject. So it's, that's, that's a hard conversation. And let's be clear, the pressure's on the provider, not you. So I just want us to make sure that we note that because that's important.
So I understand what you're saying, but the, the policy is a system policy. Where they go within the system is up for conversation. So there might be a provider that is more suited to meet a young person's need than another provider. So I think that's the conversation that we're having at the point of placement.
Listen, I understand and I agree, but I'm just being clear. As a provider, that is a hard conversation to have because now either way, you still make the decision. And so to, to, let's say, even if they give pushback, they still have very limited capacity. And I'm not saying that they wouldn't have the conversation, but what if they're truly like, we really can't do this? But you're going to be like, fine. But even the reject/eject thing that does not, it does put limitations on a provider and it's still on a provider's side. And so I'm not saying that they're not having the conversations, but let's think about a provider who might be having, you know, struggling in some areas or, you know, or doing some stuff and they're like, we, we don't have the capacity. And it's all you, you guys have the authority to say, this is how we're moving forward. I'm just saying it's, it's an uncomfortable position for providers.
Can I just say one more thing about that? Because the post-placement, the conversation is ongoing. So the staff from, the ACS staff from Close to Home is in conversation with the providers. And so sometimes there are struggles that are projected that are not actually realized, but sometimes there are struggles that are projected and realized. And so that conversation continues throughout the placement. So if adjustments have to be made, there is an opportunity for the provider to raise that with the staff.
No, and I'm sure, and here's the thing, right? I'm not, I am sure there are some providers who are probably a little bit more vocal than others, and even thinking about smaller providers who are like, I just, I'm not going to say anything because it's harder. And so I'm just saying, as an agency, I, I want us to make sure we're thinking about those conversations and what that looks like because I know as a provider, sometimes it is hard to go to your funder and admit like, I don't have capacity. And so I'm sure in some cases, and I'm not saying that you guys are pressuring, but that could happen, right? And so we need to just think about that and make sure we're noting that because that to me is really important. I remember being a provider and being like, I didn't, I wasn't a Close to Home provider, right? But like, I remember not being able to reject kids and, and being in a situation where it was uncomfortable. What are some alternative programs or agencies that Close to Home can refer youth to to ease some of the pressure to accept referrals? Are there other programs other than, than that?
No, we can only refer to our Close to Home contracted providers.
Okay. The PMMR states, "The release from Close to Home residence care to aftercare decreased during the first four months of fiscal 2024, reflecting a decline in staff determination of youth after-care readiness, which is based on a variety of factors, including youth behavior..." which is based on a variety of factors, including youth behavior in placement, severity of change, and successful participation in community-based activities." What is the average length of stay for young people in NSPs, non-secured placement, and LSPs, secured placement facilities? What are some, some of the trends Close-to-Home providers are observing that are resulting in delays of youth being released from residential care?
So youth are typically in Close-to-Home residential placement for about eight to nine months before being released to after-care. Decisions about when to start after-care are impacted by the youth's progress and assessment of safety upon their release. We did see reduction in the number of youth released to after-care in the first quarter of fiscal year twenty-four, compared to the first quarter of fiscal twenty-three. Typically, youth are released to after-care depending on when they come into us. So, you know, and that can fluctuate. One month we can have ten, the other month five. So that's how, how it's determined. We have not seen an increase in length of stay, so are not sure yet that this type of decrease is actually a trend and could be impacted by when the youth started placement. But we'll continue to monitor that. The other question was...
What are some of the trends Close-to-Home providers?
I wouldn't call them trends. We would, they're just some individual circumstances when it comes to the kids. So it is important that we take these types of steps to ensure youth successfully transition back to the community or after-care. So if kids are struggling with the program itself, that, that can hold the youth back. If the youth doesn't have like a, a successful plan to be transitioned back to the community, that can hold the youth back. So it's all on the individual lives, based on what's going on with that specific youth.
Yeah, I mean, when I was visiting one of the providers, they did speak about the struggles, especially with young people who didn't have a plan and, and sometimes would have to stay longer in, in those facilities. And, and it was often sometimes hard, even within going to other ACS facilities. Like, the communication wasn't there, and there was a lot of difficulties around like finding other placements. Could you guys talk a little bit about that piece? Because that was one of the things that providers have said has been an issue, and it has been a growing concern.
If, if I am correct, it's mostly around kids who are already in foster care and need to find a foster care placement. And sometimes kids who have a history of delinquent acts. Maybe, you know, when we're finding, we're trying to work with the foster care side is, they have a, a reject policy, and they can decide which youth can come into their care and not. And that makes it a little bit difficult on our Close-to-Home providers and our youth. Because then finding a permanency for them is much harder.
Yeah, because it wasn't even a, like, they were young people who, wasn't foster care, what was the program? I forgot. I will remember.
But we do, you know...
Because it wasn't the foster, because it was young people who were, who didn't have places to go. It was placement in other facilities that they were having issues with. But I'll, I'll, I'll remember it at some point, and I'll get, I'll come back to it.
Oh, you know, we do have now, with the new RFP, we're gonna have a transitional residential care.
Yeah, that's what it was.
So that is going to allow us to, to move those youths into that setting, so that they can continue to work on their permanency and integration back to the community.
Because that, that's what I was hearing, like, because it was, it's a pilot program currently, right?
Well, not right now. We had it, but it didn't work out so well. But with the RFP, we were able to reinstate it and get someone to do it. So we, we're gonna be working through the new, the next fiscal year on this program, and hopefully be very successful at it.
I, I'm gonna come back, because I'm trying to remember, because I've been having a lot of meetings. So I'm trying to just remember all the things in my head, but I'm gonna come back, because it was a specific issue that providers had raised around the transition piece. But I'll go to the next question. Following the implementation of Raise the Age, Close-to-Home providers are concerned that older youth are being housed with younger youth. Has the mixing of age group raised any issues? Has the agency explored separate Close-to-Homes for older and younger youth?
Oh, sorry. Typically, we try to keep the older youth separated from the younger youth, and we have a designated facility for younger youth. So we do understand that the development should be separated, so...
How are you doing that? Because what I, that's not the experience I've gotten from what the providers have been saying.
Like, we, we try to keep the, the middle school kids together. So during our intake process, we have a, we assign, when kids are newly placed with us, we have an intake worker. Those intake workers go out, interview kids, look at their profile. And depending on how they look, we do our best to assign kids by site. However, you know, we do also have to be conscious, there may be some, you know, challenges that kids come with from the community. So placing kids together from the same community could be a little bit challenging, or opposing gangs. So we, we, we take all that into consideration. And at times, we may end up with one or two kids who are younger. We haven't seen a significant, like, back set for that. There are times, you know, minimally, where kids who are younger tend to follow the older crowd. But, you know, you know, we haven't seen a huge issue in this area.
Definitely want to make sure that we keep our eye on that, because I don't want it to, I don't want us to wait till there is an issue for us to address it. And so definitely, we need to figure, make sure we're monitoring that and figuring it out, and thinking about solutions before things happen. Because I'm very much a solution-oriented person. And I don't want to be sitting here a year from now, having a hearing on an incident that took place, because we weren't being proactive. So definitely want to make sure we keep an eye on that, because that was another concern that providers have brought up. And again, there hasn't been an incident, but we don't want it to be an incident either. In the Mayors November twenty-twenty-three fiscal plan, Close-to-Home baseline funding was reduced by seven-point-two million, starting in fiscal twenty-twenty-five. ACS cited underutilization of Close-to-Home programs as the reason for the cut. What are the root causes for underutilization of Close-to-Home? Because I just, I, even before you answer this, I just want to say, I am concerned because we are seeing a huge rise in juvenile detention centers. And then to then say that there's underutilization for Close-to-Homes, I am concerned that we're not using all the tools in our toolbox to ensure that we are not placing young people in these programs. And now we're saying it's underutilization, because the math is not mathing. Because we're eighty percent capacity at the Horizon sites, but we're saying that it's underutilization in the Close-to-Homes programs. So I need some real answers, please, thank you.
Okay, so this, thank you, thank you for this question. We would not necessarily describe Close-to-Home as underutilized, because we see it as a positive, that the family court is placing fewer youth in Close-to-Home placements. The past few financial plans have instead worked to right-size the system, because we did have more capacity than needed. We previously had three hundred one beds for less than one hundred youth. And our new contracts strengthen resources for providers while bringing capacity more in line with the need. We have about one hundred youth in placement, and the new system will have one hundred forty-seven beds. As for your question about Horizon and Crossroads, ninety-eight percent of the kids who are in secure detention are not eligible for Close-to-Home. Because they are...
So then what's, then why are we not pushing that two percent out into the Close-to-Home programs? Because that's, that's my, my thing, right? Because if we're gonna talk about capacity and stuff like that, because I, I get it. I keep hearing this, they're like, oh, eighty percent, there are gun charges, da-da-da-da. So then why are we not focusing on making sure we can pull out those other young people? So that we could have more capacity. Because we literally, and I'm concerned, because as we all know, we are expanding Horizon. And everyone knows, I am not for that, because that is going to, if we build it, they will come. So if you're saying ninety-eight percent is not eligible, then why is that two percent not being referred to the Close-to-Home programs? Because then that still brings it down to ninety-six, so I...
Okay, I can explain that. So before you get placed, you are, the kids are held in detention. And so the family court judges have a choice of entering an order for non-secured detention or secured detention. Generally, the two percent of the family court kids who are in secured detention are, do then transition to Close-to-Home once they, their disposition is concluded. The length of stay for the kids who are in secured detention on the family court cases is much shorter. And so their stays in secured detention is generally much, much shorter than the young people who have their cases heard in the adult court system. And they, they come on the order of the family court judge to secure. Once that case finishes disposition, they move to Close-to-Home. So that population is much, they, they circulate much more quickly through secured detention, and then go to Close-to-Home.
That was a lot. But I'm gonna say again, even if they're circulating quicker through the secured detention, if we need to, and we're talking about capacity, to me, it makes sense to refer them out. And you guys did say that you have a good relationship with the, the court. So we should definitely be trying to use those relationships to say, we are at capacity. How do we make sure young people who qualify can go into these facilities, instead of having a shorter stay in secured detention? So that's just my suggestion, but we definitely gonna have to work it out. Because it's still, it still does not make sense to me, because I am very, very concerned. And even when I had the conversations with the commissioner, when they told me about building it, I understand that they're in a situation where they're at capacity. And so for me, we have to be creative about what a real decarceration plan looks like for juvenile justice. And I do not feel like, as a whole, and all players, not just ACS, but all players in this, need to be at the table figuring out what that looks like. Because I am very concerned that when we're talking about closing Rikers Island, and that's a decarceration plan, at the same time, we're expanding Horizons. That's a problem. And so we need to be solving for that in addition to doing other things. And so I hear you and understand that. But again, if that two percent can, does not need to be in secured detention, because it's going to be a much turner, faster turnaround, we need to be thinking about how do we then push for that?
Right, so we agree with you. And we have essentially diverted all the family court young people who used to be in secured detention to non-secured detention. So all the police admits who historically went to secured detention now go to non-secured detention. And almost the entire family court population that is detained, is, if they are detained, are in non-secured detention. But there is a difference between a post, a pre- and post-sentence young person. So they can't go to Close-to-Home until they are, the case finishes disposition. So we are certainly in conversation with the family court judges. And when we see a young person who is there for any, what we consider an extended period of time, which is very short, we, we do notify the courts and try to work with the courts and counsel to expedite. We're also talking to corporation counsel about expediting those dispositions. So their stays in secured detention are as short as possible.
And it's interesting, because I had a conversation, and, and this is a little bit off, but I had a conversation with some of the, the legal providers. And they were stating that they're seeing a trend now, where even specifically around the young people being transported back after court, being transported back to the precincts, and are staying there for, after there is a court case. There's young people who are being in precincts for up to forty-eight hours, not having secure places to sleep, because ACS hasn't picked them up to take them to, whatever, whether it's a secured detention, non-secured detention. Can you just talk a little bit about that? Because that is one of the concerns that the legal providers were explaining to me. And they're saying they're seeing upticks specifically in the Bronx, where they feel like some of the police officers are supposed to take them. So can you talk about your relationship with, with the precincts and, and different folks like that, please?
Yes, so we, we have been in conversation with the providers about this. As far as we know, this is only happening in the Bronx. This is not a family court.
No, they said it's happening, it's an uptick in the Bronx, but they've seen it in Staten Island and Manhattan as well, and Brooklyn. It has been happening more in the Bronx, though, they said. And I'm on that too, so don't worry.
So we, this is not a family court population. These are young people who are being arraigned in the criminal courts. We have been in conversation with NYPD. Apparently, this stemmed from a miscommunication. Because what is supposed to happen after, when a young person is arraigned, in the criminal court system, their custody is transferred from NYPD to the, to DOC. DOC holds them for, and notifies ACS for the pickup. There have been a few outlier cases where the NYPD has retained custody and not released them to DOC. And so they did not notify ACS that the person had been arraigned for pickup. ACS is available for pickup of young people all of the hours that the criminal courts and the family courts are open. So there is no situation where ACS has been notified of a young person post-arrangement, that we have not picked them up. So we are working with NYPD to end this practice. I think that there was just some miscommunication at some levels from the, some of the NYPD players in the courthouses to some precincts. But we, I am hopeful that by the end of this month, we will have this issue fully resolved.
Yeah, and I, I don't, and you're saying it's, it's a few, but from the legal providers? That's not what they're hearing? And so I think there's a little disconnect there, but one is too many for me, right? Like, and I think we need to just make sure that we're thinking about what this looks like moving forward, and then how do we solve for solutions? Because, you know, we don't want young people sleeping on a bench.
We agree.
Or doing all the things, like, that's just really, just unacceptable to me. What's the relationship with ACS and criminal court? Why are young people going to secured detention when we have non-secured detentions that are run by nonprofits in the community?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the last?
Why are young youth going to secured detentions when we have non-secured detention that are run by nonprofits in the community? Because you said before that they'll go to secured detention. But we have like the non, we have this not, the non-secured detention systems that are run by nonprofits. Why are we not using those a little bit more?
Okay, so non-secured detention is only permissible by law for juvenile delinquents? Those are young people who are prosecuted in the family court system? Young people who are prosecuted in the adult court system? There are two classifications, juvenile offenders, age thirteen to fifteen, charged with the most serious violent crimes. And adolescent offenders, who are sixteen and seventeen-year-olds, charged with any felony. The, the law only provides if those young people, if the court enters a detainer on those young people, they must go to secure. There's no non-secure option for them. Many young people, though, in the youth parts in criminal court, are being referred to community-based alternative to detention programs. So there are many young people who are prosecuted in the adult court system, who are in the community. But if the court detains them, the only legal option is secured detention.
How did the new, how did the November pegs impact the slots estimated and recently announced CTH, Close-to-Home awards?
The, the pegs did not impact Close-to-Home when it comes to capacity. We actually were just, again, not utilizing all of our capacity. So we still had room to get kids, and so we didn't really have any negative impact from it.
But you just said that it wasn't because of underutilization, so how, explain that to me, please.
So we have two-hundred-and-one beds, or had, or today we had twenty... At the time of the pegs, we had about two-hundred-and-thirty beds. So at that point, we were about twenty to thirty percent utilization rate in Close-to-Home. So reducing the, the numbers to two-hundred-and-one beds today really did not impact our overall functioning in the system.
I'm gonna leave it there, because we just had this, the question before that we talked about. It wasn't underutilization, and we should be thinking about it. Because one of the things the provider said that really stuck out to me is, you know, we see the increase. We know the increase. But especially when we're taking beds offline, it's not like we can bring them back online. And so I fear that we're not evaluating the system accurately, because we want, because we have to find money, right? And that's a big part of it. And so it's easy to say underutilization, although a question ago, you guys just said that it wasn't underutilization. But we, we are at a place where, you know, we're reducing these numbers, and we're not gonna be able to get them back if we need them. And so I just, I just, I'll, I'll leave that there, because we just, you know... What is the purposes and rate for non-secured placement, limited secured placement, and transitional residential care? How much has those rates increased or decreased since the last RFP?
So... So um, the you, you wanted to know what the rates were for?
Non-secure placement.
So currently, the rate for, the daily rate for non-secure placement is nine hundred and forty-three dollars?
Per day?
Per day, yeah. And the limited secure placement rates are one thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars per day.
Um, in transitional and residential um care?
Uh, that's going, it, today, we don't have that, but in the new fiscal year, it's going to be uh about one thousand one hundred and fifty-three dollars.
How much has the rate increased or decreased um since the last RFP?
Um, so this is the first time we, we're having an RFP. So this, the rate, the daily rate will be one thousand and eleven dollars for non-secure placement. And for limited secure placement, it's going to be nine hundred and ninety-two dollars daily rate.
So, so wait, say it again? So it's eleven hundred? So it increased by like a hundred dollars?
Um, for NSP?
Uh-huh.
It went from nine forty-three to one thousand and eleven dollars.
One thousand and eleven. So like two hundred dollars, so that was for inflation? I'm just, I'm asking because those numbers seem very similar. And, and how did you come to that rate?
Well, they, they are similar, but, but we have to think about like our overall system. So we were overly, like, we had like thirty facilities on site and we reduced them now to fourteen. So uh, the rates are probably more competitive today than they were in the past.
Yeah. And, and even with that, right, and I'm happy you brought up the, the, the non-competitive. So the RF, the, the RFP in twenty twenty-three had thirty-six beds in Queens, thirty-nine in, in the Bronx, fifty-four in Brooklyn, and six in Staten Island, and zero in Manhattan. How did ACS determine the slots needed in each borough? Because what I'm hearing is that there is a significant num, um, decrease in Queens.
But there's, so the way we, we came up with the numbers was based on how many kids have been placed in our care. So so going back uh, in fifth calendar year twenty twenty-three, we had a total of a hundred and eleven youth that were placed in, in Close to Home. Thirty-seven were from the Bronx, twenty-seven from Brooklyn, ten from Manhattan, twenty-four from Queens, and five from Staten Island. So that's how we came up with the numbers of beds that we needed in each borough.
I'm concerned because it's, it's specifically in Queens and, and when you think about Staten Island, the whole point of the program. And, you know, when we think about the um, the reasoning that the, this was, this came about from the task force was to place young people close to their communities. And if we're reducing the numbers in specific boroughs, that is going to have a significant impact. Because now they are far out of their communities, which we know is important for them to be close to their communities and their families. And, and, and the impact it's gonna have. And so with this decrease, I'm, I'm concerned what that's gonna look like.
So I, so there's essentially an equivalent number of available beds in, going into the RFP in Queens and the Bronx. There are thirty-nine beds in the Bronx, there are thirty-six beds in Queens, there are fifty-four in Brooklyn. And so there, I think essentially what we did is we looked at where the young people were coming from. And we tried to proportionally allocate beds in the boroughs where they were, where they live. And so we should not see, because we had many beds that were not being filled, we are looking to have enough beds that will be filled by young people as close to their home as possible.
I just wanna say, and I have a Queens person here, so I'm sure she's gonna ask questions about it. But, because like, if I'm a person in Queens and I have to go to the Bronx, and especially a lot of these folks come from public transportation, that is like going upstate, right? And so if these beds fill up, then we're gonna have to then place them even further, which we do have some upstate. And so that, to me, should have been taken into consideration, not just with like, oh, we see these trends. Because we know trends change, things happen, and then we will have to place them in far parts. And so I'm, I'm, that is a concern and one of the red flags that a lot of providers um, flags for us as we were preparing for this hearing. And so, you know, I think we have to be cognizant of that. Because again, like the provider said, once we reduce these beds and they're no longer there, we can't be like, okay, we see a trend, let's get these beds back online. We know that's not the case. And so what would be the alternative? And the alternative is going to be that these young people are going to have to leave their community. And literally, it's in the name, Close to Homes. It's, it's literally in the name. We want them close to their homes. So I, I, I wanna make sure that we are cognizant of those things when we're, we're kind of rolling those things out. I'm gonna ask a couple more questions and then I will turn it over to my co, well, only one. Do you guys have a question? Oh, great, great, great. Um, matter of fact, I will turn it over to my colleagues um at this time. And I'll come back because I have a number of more questions. Um, Councilmember Williams?
Hello.
Morning.
Um, I just wanted to know, the transitional residential care, that is what you're saying, you're RFPing out now, right?
Oh, well, the award was already uh, given, yeah.
So how many of those facilities do you have?
At this time, only one.
One, okay, where is it?
Uh, in Staten Island.
Okay. And then what is the plan to create more of those facilities?
Well.
Well, how many more do you plan to create?
Well, may, not necessarily create more, maybe increase the capacity depending on how many youth we can get in there and the success of the program. So, and the need of it.
Okay, um, I'm trying to figure out what the name of the facility was. I know um Hart Share St. Vincent or HSVS, one of, I know they have like multiple names. They were trying to open up like a residential facility for young people, but I'm not sure if it was the TRC or something else. Do you know what the facility was? I don't know, I'm just asking. Do you know what it was? I see using back there, shaking her head.
Yeah.
Oh, it's not a part of ACS at all, something completely different. Oh, okay, cool. Just wanted to know if it was the same thing. Um, okay, what is ACS doing to ensure that older youth um at Close to Home have access to GED and vocational training programs at all CTH facilities?
So um, through District Seventy-Nine, we are working with them to offer GED uh exam to our kids. They do prep our GED, um, our GED students who are uh, in that GED track.
Mm-hmm.
Um, however, our providers, if they feel like this, the youth should be on a GED track, they're able to refer that y- young men or women to the community and get GEDs uh, tra- uh schooling, and so.
Okay, um, how is ACS addressing staff retention issues at Close to Home facilities, given what appears to be high staff turnover rate? And what is ACS doing to ensure the continuity of Close to Home staff?
So the RFP actually um includes increased rates for staff salaries. Um, and we're very appreciative of the three percent COLA that was awarded this year. And we are hopeful that those things together will help with staff retention. Um, we are in conversation with the providers about um providing, supporting them with additional training for their staff um to allow for, you know, issues that have not necessarily arisen in the past, but are, are, they're currently facing.
And I'm sorry, the RFP is currently open or it was just awarded, the newer, okay, the new Close to Home RFP was just awarded?
It was, it was awarded and begins in July.
Okay. Um, what is ACS doing to meet the needs of crossover youth in Close to Home? That is, young people in foster care who also have juvenile delinquency case. Um, given that youth are being held at Close to Home placement longer than necessary, waiting for foster care placement, discharge planning must start, start earlier. Has ACS identified the barriers to finding foster care placement for these youth? And how does ACS support families with voluntary placements who may be willing to take their child's home with services after Close to Home placement?
So when it comes to crossover youth, we try to make sure that we keep the foster care agency involved since, from the moment the youth enters our facility. So we wanna make sure that they participate in our conference, that they meet with the youth in person. Um, we do have a person who monitors like the crossover cases within ACS. So if we're having challenges, we will reach out to that person so that they can help bridge the gap. Um, we, we provide as much information as possible to the foster care agencies so that they can find that young man or woman a foster care placement so that they don't linger in our system. There are times that we do find challenges and that the youth has stayed much longer in our system than we would like. So, you know, we're trying to continuously work with our partners within ACS and foster care agencies to try to make sure that the kids don't linger.
And what about the voluntary placement? So for families who are willing to take their children back who have had services at Close to Home?
So if kids are in our system and the families are requesting voluntary, uh, Close to Home specifically doesn't do it, but we do reach out to the parts of the agencies that manage them.
Um, what can be done to fund more, more alternative to placement programs and slots in the community so that less youth are placed within Close to Home? Why have so many of these? I think this question was kind of answered. Um, I can stop there and come back if there's a second round.
No, keep going.
Okay, um, regarding the planned decrease in the number of Close to Home beds and at the same time, the planned construction to increase capacity of the Horizon Detention Facility, why can't underutilized Close to Home beds be used instead of increasing the size of a detention facility? Would ACS be willing to explore this option with the state?
So that's really a legal question.
Mm-hmm.
So Horizon is a detention facility, which means it's pre-sentence, predisposition. And we can't, you can't go to Close to Home until the court has reached disposition in a family court case. Most of the young people, the vast majority of young people in secure detention are not in family court. And their only option is secure detention if they are detained. So we are open to exploring all options, but that would require a, a change both in the Family Court Act and the criminal procedure law.
So are you saying that the law needs to be changed or are you just saying that it's a judicial?
So Close to Home is a, is a post-sentence option. So, and it only is available to family court kids. So you have to be, you have to have a case pending in family court to go to Close to Home.
So all the young folks who are in Horizon, they are in criminal court or family court?
But ninety-eight percent of them are in criminal court.
Okay. Um, how many girls are in Close to Home and are they effectively isolated? And what is ACS doing to prevent isolation if they are being isolated in ways that are harmful?
Uh, we have fifteen girls.
Fifteen?
Yes. And we don't use isolation in our system.
Okay. Um, Close to Home was envisioned to connect youth to services in their communities while incarcerated to facilitate continuity upon discharge. Is that happening? If not, what can be done to make it happen?
So our providers provide both residential and aftercare. So when the youth is placed with the facility, they continue to work with that youth until they end their dispositional order.
Okay, um, last question. Why has the discharge rate to aftercare decreased? Is it a lack of adequate programming for the youth in Close to Home?
Um, I wouldn't say that the discharges are decreasing. It's just that, it, they all did, like, that number is gonna change month to month depending on when the youth came into our system. Because they typically spend eight to nine months in our, in the facility. So if, if you have a low number month, it may be that we just got less kids throughout that period.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. The chair had to step out for a minute, so she's asked me to temporarily chair. So I'm gonna turn it over to Councilmember Lee for her questions.
Hi, thank you. Um, so my questions are gonna be focused around more of the mental health cognitive behavioral evidence-based therapy, as well as Oasis substance use questions. Because one thing I've noticed, and this is regarding um treatment courts across the age demographic, whether you're talking about veterans, whether you're talking about adults. Um, and, and similarly, I was just wondering, because my understanding is that the treatment courts are an effective tool, they're not utilized enough. And I'm just wondering what that process looks like in terms of the screening, if they have specifically more mental health-related issues. Um, what type, like, what does that look like? And then how do they get treated after that? And if you could just walk me through that process. And are there enough mental health professionals who are there?
You're asking about the court process.
The court process and then also the handoff.
Okay, so family court, unlike criminal court, is really more like a problem-solving court. So for kids who present with higher needs, the court can access, the, there's a, each court has a mental health clinic. And so they can order, if they have concerns about that, they can order a mental health evaluation on the young person to help inform what the dispositional plan should look like. And because the Family Court Act requires an analysis of what the least restrictive alternative is, given the needs of the young person and public safety issues, each family court judge is charged with identifying the issues, getting the information both from the mental health professionals in the courthouse and probation to determine whether or not the child's needs can be met in the community um with services that are available in the community continuum or an, a placement order may need to be issued. And then the place, the dispositional plan will, may designate certain um, certain services that they want provided while the young person is in Close to Home or Close to Home, the Close to Home providers along with ACS staff will designate which services should be provided to meet that young person's need. And there are specific Close to Home facilities that are designated for young people with specified needs like developmental disabilities or other issues. Um, one of the things that we built into the RFP was additional mental health professionals for the providers along with individuals who are trained in substance misuse, who can address those young people's needs.
Okay, and then, because I noticed, um, so going back, because one of the answers that you provided earlier mentioned that sometimes it's not always that the folks are, the younger folks are screened for those types of perhaps potential mental health issues. But shouldn't they all be screened? Or is it based on what documents you receive from the family courts and their evaluations? And then by, um, based on that, is that how you determine if certain folks need to be screened for other services?
Yeah, they, they're all screened. So when they come to us, they do have, most young person has a mental health assessment. However, what, and we get a copy of it, however, when they've reached the facility, uh, the providers.
And what does that assessment look like?
The mentof, uh, is done by a psychiatrist or a psychologist. And it's a very detailed report that describes the youth's history, how they came to us, any, it describes their educational component, uh, psychosocial components, uh, and the, and if they have trauma or not. Um, as well, as well as our partners in Bellevue, who are also in detention, would also meet with the kids if they need another assessment, and they will share with us as well. And then the providers have all that information and their psychiatrists would also meet with the, with the youth.
Okay. And then also, um, if you could just talk a little bit about what your sort of relationship is and coordination with um perhaps either DOHMH or OMH or Oasis at the state level when it comes to the care and the programming and the, you know, comprehensive care around some of the youth in these programs?
So our relationships with them is like, if we have to refer a youth that has a higher level of mental health and we need to, to put them like in RTC, uh, we'll reach out to OMH, discuss the case, try to see if they fit the program. Um, the same is with the Oasis. If they need like an inpatient program, we would try to communicate with them, collaborate and see if, if we can get the youth in that program.
And then is that the same also with OPWDD?
Uh, yes.
Okay. And then, is, is there any sort of coordination at the city level?
So we are in conversation like as a system consistently with, you know, with this, our state partners and our city partners. And so as we identify gaps in the system or an increasing need, we are in conversation with our state and city partners as to how to meet that need. So some of that need is met in the community. There's a lot, obviously lots of discussion about creating a stronger continuum from community through placement for these young people to access. So that conversation is ongoing.
Okay, sorry, just one more. And then, um, aside from the individual cases that you have, are there more coordinated efforts, like, I hate the word. Like, I hate the word task force, but some kind of task force or some sort of regular ongoing meeting to evaluate how the systems amongst each other are working in terms of coordination?
So we are in regular conversation with, um, like, I'll give, I'll give you an example. So, um, we've, we've been working with, um, with Oasis and DOHMH on, um, on drug substance use misuse issues, on Narcan training. Um, we are in conversation as a coalition discussing how the continuum of services are either meeting or not meeting young people's mental health needs and family needs. Many of our community-based services are, um, are in conversation with the mental health continuum because there's so much overlap between family friction issues and mental health. Um, and so we are in constant coordination with the mental health system to access supports that ACS may not be in a position to access when the needs get to a certain level.
Okay. Um, and also in terms of the providers that you awarded for the RFPs was, and forgive me for not reading about this ahead of time, but were there requirements in the RFP to make sure that the providers have either the licensed professionals or the Article 31s or their necessary licenses to offer the services?
Uh, yes, they, they require, yeah.
Okay. Um, and then also another thing in terms of the beds, right? Because one of the things that you were all talking about is, um, the capacity to increase. And was, I, I just wanted to throw this out there because I feel like with this population also, there's not enough of, um, what's equivalent to the crisis respite centers, but for specifically for youth, because I believe there's only about fifteen beds in the city. And we put something out last year requiring the city to expand that. But I, I'd be curious to know if, if some of those beds could be almost used in that similar type model? Where if there are beds that are not filled, which I, I, I would think that they would be, but if not, then, you know, are there different similar services that the beds could be used for? Because right now there's not enough places for them to go in case of emergencies or anything else.
ACS does have some respite beds. They are available. They can be used as a diversion. If a court orders a placement in close to home, respite is not part of that continuum. But a court can work with counsel to allow for a respite referral.
Okay.
And so if the court is willing to allow a less restrictive placement for the young person, then that's possible.
Okay, interesting. Okay, thank you.
Council member Minna?
Great, thank you so much. So you mentioned earlier in your testimony that young people who are part of the close to home program have access to after-school activities, trips, et cetera. Can you be specific what percentage of young people are being offered these opportunities?
So all the kids that are attending Passages Academy are offered these opportunities. So, um, it would be all, essentially all the kids that are at Bronx Hope and at Belmont.
And what about the other young people in the program?
The, uh, the, the kids at Greenberg 11, um, they do have after-school and they do participate. Uh, but it's through, through Greenberg 11.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear yet, through?
It's through Greenberg 11, which is-
I see.
The, the private school that's on the Dot Ferry campus.
Okay. And in terms of proximity to families, since that is obviously one of the policy reasons behind this program, can you specifically indicate how close are young people to their families? How many are regularly seeing their families?
Well, I don't have that exact data, but we can get back to you on it. Uh, but most families are less than an hour from their, from their youth in the placement site.
So when you say most families less than an hour-
Yes.
The majority of families-
Are, are close.
And what about the other?
Well, we have some kids in Westchester, which is about twenty minutes from the Bronx. So those would be kids who are most further away.
Can you provide to the committee then the specific numbers of, of young people who, and, and the, and the distance? Because I think that that is very relevant. And also can you provide in terms of after-school programming? You mentioned in the beginning when you were speaking with the chair, um, that you're offering, I, I would love to see specifically what after-school programs are being offered to how many students? And if you could be specific about that, please? Thank you.
All right, ju- just, just to clarify a little bit. So the, the NSP kids go to either Bronx Hope or Belmont, and the after-school programs happen at those sites. And all of those kids in those facilities have access to the after-school programs. So we don't pick and choose populations. If you're in the building, you have access to after-school programs.
Okay, understood. Thank you for clarifying that.
All right, I'm back. Um, I, I have, I still have a number of questions. Um, and, uh, council member Williams started to allude to some of these questions, but want, want to dig a little bit more into the staffing piece. Providers had shared that there's a high staff turnover for, um, C, um, CTH facilities because the pay is low and the work is very demanding. Kafka conducted a work comprehensive, um, survey in 2022, and found that staff is in voluntary agencies like CTH with higher, high, higher school degrees or GEDs are starting, um, fifteen, fifteen thousand dollars less than ACS counterparts. What is, or anything being done to address the staff salaries?
ACS, of course, appreciates the work of our close to home providers, and we understand that the job is demanding and that it's very important for staff to be adequately compensated. Um, our new RFP for contracts beginning July first of this year, um, has allocation for increased staff salaries. Um, we additionally provided funding specifically for an education specialist, a programming specialist, and a behavioral health specialist. Um, and we are, as we mentioned, grateful to the mayor for including the three percent COLAs over the next three years. Um, the new close to home contracts enable the providers to increase compensation for staff, and we believe that they are in the process of allocating that new money for salaries. So we hope that that will mitigate against some of these issues.
Um, and just, and just even thinking about that, because I know you're saying that it was money increase for salaries. What, did ACS provide a sample budget of what that could look like to providers? To show like what that breakdown can look like? Because, and, and, and that's why I say sample, because, you know, sometimes you might think like, oh, they can increase salaries. And is there an example that they can look to?
Um, we're in conversation with the providers, and it is our understanding that they have already allocated-
Oh, absolutely.
-the money for, for staff salaries. So they, it, they seem to know how to proceed in this area.
But that's not what I asked. And so obviously providers know how to proceed in the area. But I think specifically when we're thinking about RFPs and when we're gearing up, that a lot of times agencies will say like, oh, we gave an increase, but we know especially with costs rising and rents and all the things that they have to be, account for, sometimes it isn't increased, but it can't go to salaries because of other things. And so I would have loved to see some type of sample that you could have given providers to kind of help with that guidance. It's, you know, just best practices. No one is doing it. So this is not being ACS, no one is doing it. This is something that I'm pushing because I think that is important, especially as agencies, that we are modeling what we want to see. Um, the next questions are, their baseline, um, CTH staffing hire requirements? For example, are staff required to have a degree in education fields or several years of experience with juvenile, um, involved justice, involved youth?
Um, we do have, uh, staffing requirements that require, certain positions do require, um, certain educational requirements.
Could you give some examples of that, please?
Uh, so for example, social workers, we, we require them to have a master's level. Um, if case planners, they should require a bachelor's level degree. Um, and the YDA staff, uh, the frontline staff should have a, a high school or GED equivalent.
I mean, so one of the things that I know when I was talking to providers that they were very concerned about is that when you, it's very similar work to this, um, to, to places like Horizon and Crossroads, and they're getting paid a lot higher salary. So staff is literally migrating to those areas because they can just get paid more. And so that is also a part of retention. So I'm, I want us to also be mindful and think about, well, what does it look like to ensure that there's equity? Because if I can go do pretty much a similar, the same job here and make double the money, or not double, it's a little bit more money, not double, I'm taking it too far. Um, and make more money, then obviously they're going to recruit. And so now, I just want to point out, you are the funders who are now recruiting for the same staff, right? So it becomes a double entendre. And so we really got to get to a place where pay parity is something that we're moving towards. Because, you know, one of the things that I found when I was, um, when we were doing research and we were going through some of the documents, that I found that was really interesting is that close to homes was thought as, uh, the task force said that it was cost-effective. And so that means even in the imagining of this, we knew that this was going to be, we were going to be paying people less. Um, and that's not on your fault. That is what the task force said, because it's cheaper to do this. And so we should move in this direction, obviously has other benefits too. I don't want to, I don't want to try to side like that. But if we are going with the thought of thinking about we're going to come in and save money, um, that is already putting us at a disadvantage. So I just wanted to make sure that I, I highlighted that. And again, that was not something that came from ACS. That came out of the task force who said this is a cost-effective mechanism that we're putting in place. So I don't think I let you answer the question because I saw the rambling. Did you answer the question?
Yes, we did.
Okay, okay, great. Uh, um, in the new RFP, staffing ratios were reduced from eight to one to three to one. Why would the staffing ratios change? And does the reduction jeopardize staff safety? And I just want to say providers have been into the staff reduction, but I just wanted to have a conversation about it.
Um, so the staffing ratio, um, is changed so that instead of eight youth to one staff, it's now three to ones youth, does more staff. Uh, we made the change because we appreciate that the youth in close to home are now older due to race to age and presenting more challenging, given the impact of race to age. We think this new staffing ratio will make staff more safe, make youth more safe, and help address some of the more, uh, the staffing issues our providers was facing.
According to the PMMR, youth on staff assault increased from 2023 to 2024. What is being done to train and protect staff?
I'm sorry, repeat that again?
Um, they're saying, the PMMR said that, um, um, assaults increased in 2023 to 2024 on staff. So what are we doing to protect and, um, provide protection for staff in these programs?
So staff in, in the provider agencies are trained in SEM, which is the same training that is provided in secure detention. Um, we are aware that, um, the training need is real. Um, we are actually in discussion now about, um, moving at least one and maybe more of our staff from secure detention to make them available for training to the providers to increase the opportunity and the frequency of, um, of SEM training for staff in the close to home sites.
So this is something we're going to work with. So we're thinking about, because I, I, I know, um, like, obviously the, your staff who are in secure detention, they get specific training. So we're, we're looking at ways that we can like also help train some of our close to home staffs with that same training, those training techniques.
So they're already trained? The close to home staff is already trained?
No, 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 I know they're trained, but I was saying like, our, because I know you just said that you're looking to have some of those cross trainings.
Yes.
And so that's something we're already working on.
Yes, we are already working on that.
Great, thank you. Um, do CTH providers receive specific training on how to manage gun or gang-involved youth? Because I know, um, one of the things that the providers were mentioning is that they've seen, they've seen, uh, increase in young people in their facilities, um, with gun charges. And so do we have specific trainings? Are there things down the pipe to kind of boost, booster that training and support?
Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say this about young people who are involved in heavy-duty activities on the streets. Many of them, um, are drawn to that because of their own trauma histories.
Absolutely.
And so we, our model across the continuum is a relational model and building the, the core competencies of our young people so that they can build their self-esteem, so that they can develop the skills that they need to engage in their communities, um, and be more supported. And so be, because it is a counseling, um, based, uh, approach, we spend a lot of time and we have spent a lot of time in the provider agencies talking to the young people. The, as the young people spend time in these facilities, they learn to develop pro-social relationships with adults and they're connected to pro-social activities. They start to see their futures in a different way. And when they start to see their futures in a different way, they are less likely to attach to negative, um, forces that are in the community. And so the goal really is to replace, um, the, the activities that they might have been involved in before they come into placement with, um, with activities that allow them to see a positive future. And so re-engaging them in school, engaging them in vocational training, allowing them to identify a future path, uh, for, um, for work and to engage with their families and working on some of the issues that they might have had with their families so that they can live peacefully with their families upon re-entry into the community are all protective factors that allow these young people to not go back to the same activities that they were involved in when they came in.
Yeah, no, and I, and I agree. I think that obviously we, therapeutic approach is always the first step. And, and also when we're, we're talking about young people especially who may be involved in gangs, a lot of it is because they want to feel connected. And I say it all the time, we have to find other ways for them to be connected to positive activities. Um, but still just thinking, and, and when talking to providers, they're saying there is a level of care, especially for the young people who are gun-involved, that they feel that is needed. And so, um, even with that, I think we should be, still be thinking about, is there, is, does that mean some of the work we need to do is more intense or whatever? But it is a place where I think we should be, um, kind of digging our heels into to think like what other things we could do, could do, because this was a point of, um, concern for providers. And so, you know, I think obviously what they're doing, you know, is therapeutic and supportive, but we should just be thinking about how do we do it a little bit more intensely? Um, but thank you for your, your answer. Um, staff has reported that young people who exit detention facilities and enter CTH care are often armed with contraband, including weapons. Providers have no way of screening young people upon entering because CTH facilities do not have metal detectors. Has ACS explored screening young people before entering CTH facilities? And does ACS document when a young person enters CTH armed with contraband?
So youth entering close to home, um, the providers do have the ability to search the youth. Um, so all providers are required to conduct, uh, what we call a personal search on all youth entering their facility to ensure that they have not concealed contraband. Uh, personal searches consists of pat, frisk, uh, searches and security searches, which require youth to, uh, change to a robe after removing his or her undergarment. Uh, the agencies are also equipped with handheld, um, metal detectors to detect metal objects on a youth. Um, and the, and the question around if we have a, we do have a incident reporting, um, unit where providers call in, uh, into our hotline incidents that are reportable.
We have also increased the intensity of the searches, um, in secure for youth coming in and out of, of those facilities. And since implementing the enhanced search procedures, we have seen many fewer youth, um, leaving the facilities with anything they should not have.
Thank you. Um, staffers have reported they have, um, do not have a secure system nor the capacity to transport youth to and from court. What more can ACS do to provide, um, staff with the right vehicles and supports?
Um, so we have not experienced a high level of challenge around this area in our close to home program.
You haven't experienced all the providers, because this is what they say. And these, these are, I'm telling you now, I did not come up with these questions by myself. So the providers are saying that they are having trouble and this has been a difficulty, so.
And I know we've experienced this in our, our non-secure detention. Most of close to home providers are the same providers, but, um-
All right, so you just said it. They're the same providers and they, they're struggling in one piece. You think they're not struggling in the other piece? Maybe they're just not saying it.
No, uh, it's, there's less court involvement. So when you've come into close to home, uh- Uh, it's, there's less court involvement, so when you've come into Close to Home, uh, most of them don't have to go back and forth to court.
But they're saying that they're struggling.
Yeah, but you know, we're, we're, they haven't brought this to my attention and I'm always open to.
Well, great, I'm bringing it to your attention.
So we, we'll, we'll talk to the Close to Home providers to discuss this specifically to see what exactly are the concerns around this area.
Yeah, let's, let's talk about it and also let's come up with some solutions, right? Um, I'm telling you now, I didn't make these questions up, I promise you, I did not, I promise y'all, I'm getting this from the providers.
But, uh, just to add, like, in our RFP, we did add, uh, transportation to their budget, so.
Yeah, because I, I mean, I think some of the concern was even thinking about like when it, it does happen with the staff ratios and, and especially because it's, it's less ratios now. So I think it's some other factors in there that we also need to consider, but the, this, this was one of the things that they did, did raise around it. And so they're probably not going to court as much as, you know, probably the secured detention, obviously. But the few times that they do have to go, that, you know, that it does become an issue. Um, but again, this is just a place where we can find solutions. Um, one precaution providers that I have shared, um, that would ensure safety for both staff and youth is keeping defendant's name confidential for court hearing appearances. Is this something CTA can request, CTH can request?
So this is a little bit more complicated.
Mm-hmm.
Because.
I don't think your mic is on.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
So in family court, the, the names are not available. So I think that this is a criminal court, Supreme Court issue. We don't, we are certainly open to having these conversations with the, with the judges. But because these, the young people are being prosecuted in the adult system and facing adult sentences even after raised the age, in, unless they get youthful offender treatment, which seals their cases up until that point, the names are not confidential in the court system. And so that would require a change outside of our system. But we are certainly open to conversation with the judges about it.
Another place for us to do work, we have so much stuff to do, you're about to be our best friend. We have a lot of stuff and a lot of solutions to come up with. Um, because I am always open to sit down and talk and come up with solutions because it does sound like that is something we should be thinking about. Because I will say this, part of my district is the, um, the courts in the Bronx and we've had a lot of activity outside the courthouse. Um, and it is an issue, um, even, you know, for juveniles and for older adults. And it's been a real issue where we've had fights outside, we've had shootouts, we've had a lot. And so it has been, it's become a place where they're like, oh, I know you're gonna be here on this day at this time, so this is what we're gonna get you. And so I think this is something that's not just something that ACS needs to be thinking about. I think a system overhaul is something we should be talking about. So definitely a place for us to collaborate and come up with some solutions. Um, which providers are currently contracted to provide after service, aftercare services?
So we have a continuity of care model, so the provider where the youth enters the facility is the same provider that will be providing the aftercare service.
Providers have reported that young people who return home to their families can often fall into the same pattern of gang, gun violence, related violence that leads to high rates of recidivism. How do aftercare providers work with, um, young people to help them avoid that cycle?
So aftercare services within Close to Home initiate, initiative is compromise of supportive and sustainable services that are available to youth and as they transition back to their home. Uh, services aim to create a smooth transition from residential to community settings. These services can include mental health and substance abuse, case management and support, uh, along with community-based programming. Our youth are also, uh, connected to Fair Future coaches and we also, uh, make sure that they, they, the providers along with ACS meet with the youth weekly, bi-weekly, monthly, depending on the youth's risk.
And the Cure Violence providers that have, that work with the young people while they're in placement, continue that relationship?
All right, I have some questions about that, um, coming up. Um, after, um, aftercare providers trained and equipped to respond to the needs of gangs and gun-involved youth, and does ACS keep track of youth who re-enter the Close to Home program? And how many young people re-entered the program in twenty twenty-three?
Uh, so of the youth who entered Close to Home placement in, uh, calendar year twenty twenty-three, ninety-two percent, uh, one hundred and two youth were the first time at admissions and nine percent, eight youth had a previous Close to Home placement.
Um, and are the aftercare providers trained and equipped to, to address some of the needs that they, you know, get to get involved in afterwards? So could you talk about a little bit of what those services look like and what that, those they're providing?
So, um, depending on the youth needs, so we have provider who use the, the multi-systemic therapeutic model for youth on aftercare. We have providers who use family functioning therapy on aftercare. Uh, we are also able to, to refer families to preventive services during, when they're in aftercare that is needed. We try to, uh, meet the youth's needs based on their case plan and what would be. So maybe a youth would rather go to the door or the YMCA. So we'll connect the youth to those type of programmings as well.
And I think that, that's even a, a good place where, and, and where I feel like we have like DRCD and, and, and not just with Cure Violence, they have all these other programs. And how are we placing them into those programs and connecting them with those providers? Because the other thing is like, all these providers are the same people, like we sometimes pretend like they're not. They, the ones who are running the, the non-secure detention centers are running the after schools, they're running the senior centers, they're running the food pantries. Like, they're all the same people, but we put them in these boxes. And so, you know, it's really thinking of, and they're also running the, the homeless shelters, like they're all the same providers. And so because we contract them different, we're interacting with them differently. And so my goal, before I get out of here, I'm talking about council, that we figure out how to break down those walls because it's, it's really frustrating sometimes to hear how we are just not like using all these things at our disposal. How does the agency ensure that aftercare services are not only readily available but, um, satisfactory to, um, former youth and their families? So what are we doing to kind of just like make sure that it's useful and it's just not a box that we're checking?
Oh, sorry. So we do have, um, conferences with the families and the youth and their voices are infused in those conferences. So we make sure that whatever service is tailored, that they are in agreement. And if they're not in agreement, we hear them why. And we also take into account what type of services they feel would benefit them. And during, we have about five conferences throughout the life of the case where youth and family are definitely in the room talking about their, their needs.
For youth who had their aftercare placement revoked, is there a re-evaluation process? And do youth, um, re-join CTH programming or they drop from the program entirely?
No, uh, we continue to offer services to youth until, uh, they complete the program and beyond that as well with, now that we have Fair Futures. If a youth is returned, they typically return back to the program that they were in. We would hold a conference to talk about what went well, what they're in and talk about maybe what's needed to be able to reintegrate the youth back into the community.
Are there any patterns among youth who break their, um, release terms? If yes, would, are we, would it be being done to better support youth and reduce violations?
Um, that would be the same of bring the kid back into our facilities. So again, if the youth is not complying, uh, we'll, we'll try to engage the youth. If the youth is not engaging in the community, we'll bring them back again to try to reset the youth and, and continue to work with, with them.
Um, CTH providers have reported a desperate need for more transitional housing. What temporary housing options are available for youth, um, exiting residential care who are not returning to their home settings? And how do aftercare providers work with young people to find temporary or permanent housing?
Um, so for kids who are placed in a non-secure placement, um, they actually are able to qualify for special housing codes, uh, depending if their goal is independent living. So they are able to get a priority code for like New York, New York Three, um, and things like that. We're also.
I'm, I'm sorry, what's, what is the priority code? Could you explain what that means?
Well, priority code is a code that our youth could get to kind of put them at the, the higher, uh, list. They will get a higher list number so that they can get housing.
A hi, a higher list number, tell me, I'm, I'm sorry, explain to me, because I don't know what you're talking about, what, what list?
So there's certain.
How do we get to a list?
There's certain. So the way the housing, um.
You're talking about like in the lottery?
We don't call it a lottery, but it's like a housing list that, that HRA has, so.
Don't get me started, you brought up the HRA, you know, you know, so they, so we just put them on the list because we know that ain't going nowhere. And don't say they're getting a City Fest voucher either, because we know that's not happening either, so.
Well, I mean, we've been, we've been able to get some kids housing. However, like, you know, it's very challenging here in New York City to get permanent housing for anyone. But we do get them on those lists. We're not saying that it's expedited, but, I mean, they're not gonna get a, a home tomorrow, right? Or even three months from now. But we do get them on those priority lists, which is something better than not being on any list for our kids.
I mean, if you're homeless, it ain't nothing, because you still ain't got nowhere to go, so, I mean.
But that's why, um, we, part of the reason in our RFP, we created the Transitional Residential Care is so that kids can have somewhere to go and so for us to have more time to work with the kids.
And question, are you coordinating with the RHY centers, um?
We, we're not allowed to. Our kids, we're not supposed to release them to RHY. They're not supposed to be homeless leaving our care.
So then what happens, we just hold them while we wait for the list? Look, she giving you a paper.
That's why, that's why we created the transitional beds because we, we recognized that we needed a place for these young people to be while we could work out these issues. The, the majority of young people who leave Close to Home go back to their families. So it's only a small percentage that is in this situation and we're hopeful that the Transitional Residential Center will meet the needs of that population until we can access longer-term options for those kids.
Well, I will say, um, I think the transitional housing obviously is needed and, but we should never say a small percentage, because even if it's one kid, it's one too many. And so like, I know like in, in scope, it's like, okay, well, it's not that many, but like, it's still, those young people are still have to suffer through it. And so, um, I do think, um, and, and, and definitely as, as the transitional housing is rolling out that we continue to like kind of think of other solutions. Because there was another, remember I was talking about, I couldn't remember what, what happened with the kid in the transitional? So apparently some of the issue is, um, and families are having issues, and not just the kids, families who are homeless are having issues, but it's not the NSPs and LSPs, it's the NSDs. Um, families who are homeless, they're having a hard time being released because the family's homeless. So they don't, they've been staying longer and having some issues there. Could you kind of talk about that? Because I think that's a whole nother separate issue where it's like, yes, sometimes the kids don't have any place to go, but sometimes neither does the family. So how are we solving for that? And are we, and I'm gonna say the, I'm gonna say the word, are we working with the HRAs and the DHSs to kind of help and support families around that, which are, that's a whole nother can of worms? And what does that coordination look like?
We actually have an entire committee of people at ACS who are working with HRA to address some of these issues. I think, you know, I would like to say where we found a solution to homelessness in New York City.
We have, oh.
We're not quite there.
We have not found a solution.
Yes, so, correct. So we are in conversation with them, we are raising the issues as they arise, we are reporting our trends to them and we're trying to identify solutions collectively for, for those issues. But these are ongoing kind of founding issues.
I mean, it's, it's, it's a real issue and I think one of the things that you can't solve alone. Um, and, and really have to, we have to think about what does it look like on the other end? And so this is, this is an issue in general, but definitely something that we have to continue to, to, to kind of monitor. Um, and I have a question, um, also about the NS, um, NSDs. There haven't, there hasn't been, um, haven't been provided a lot of information. What data, what data can you provide for the youth that's, um, where, that's being served in NSDs? What is the average stay? And what is the coordination between the non-secure detentions and ACS?
Well, I think we can, um, give you those numbers, we don't have them today.
Okay.
Um, but ACS oversees the non-secure detention?
Yeah, I know, that's what I'm asking.
Oh, so you said what's the correlation between?
Yeah, what, like what's, um, what's the average say? What is the coordination between the non-secure detentions and ACS? Like what is, and I guess it's like the NSPs, because what resources does NSD have and how does those compare to the NSPs?
What's the what?
What's the resources, what resources do NSDs have and how does that compare to NSPs?
Well, um, the Close to Home sites have more resources, given that the kids are there for much longer periods. The kids in NSD typically spend about forty-five days in, in our system. However, onsite, uh, the NSDs do have access to mental health and psychiatric services that is, uh, provided by Bellevue. But the, the, and the educational services are also provided by D seventy-nine. And they, you know, depending on how the non-secure detention facilities are doing, they also get to go on trips and outings. But the resource, it's much more resources on the Close to Home, given that our kids are there much longer.
And definitely if you can get back those, those other numbers and we'll, we'll follow up afterwards. Transitional residential care, TRCs, is designed for males, not females, preparing to leave CHT facilities without permanent living arrangements. Could you explain the need for this program and, um, are there a disproportionate number of males struggling to find permanent living arrangements following care?
So, um, most of the kids in our care are males, uh, about ninety-two percent compared to females. Um, most of the, the youth who have hard time going back are, are males. So, uh, we decided to start it with males to see how we can help that side of the population.
Okay, so we're, we're like this, because it's new, so we're assessing and so we're in assessment phase. Okay, I can, I can live with that, but we'll follow up it after it's released and see how, and see where we are. Providers report that insignificant funding for fair fair programs are resulting in coaches with limited capacities to serve a growing population of just as involved young people. What is the agency doing to address this?
So, uh.
Because we all love fair fares, I mean, fair futures.
So we, we, we are pleased that there has been such a good engagement in fair shoes, fair futures by the juvenile justice system. Um, this is our original rollout and we will be assessing and looking forward to discussing this with our providers.
Yeah, when I was talking with some of the providers, they definitely expressed that, you know, fair futures, they don't feel like is, um, they don't have enough resources to be as robust as they would like. So, um, we know that this has been a priority, um, not only for the council, but also the administration. I mean, you know, ACS and, um, the commissioner. And so definitely want to make sure that we're keeping this in the forefront of like, how do we make sure that this program is being funded adequately? I mean, I mean funded adequately and giving the providers the support so we can continue to grow this out. Because I know this has been something that everybody has, you're, you know, really championed. Um, ACS conducted specific program for youth with intellectual and developmental disabilities and youth who exhibited problematic sexual behave, behaviors. Approximately how many youth were placed in IDDs or PSB program in twenty twenty-three?
So we had a total of five youth last year who were placed in the PSB and a total of twenty-five in the DD settings.
What's the process for determining whether youth need those specialized services?
So, uh, again, we do have a, a intake and assessment unit that goes out, interviews the youth, talks with the parents, talks with, uh, youth who've been in contact with the youth while in detention. We look at the evaluations, depending on, on, if a youth has like a IQ score that would, that is, uh, development delay, then they would be placed with that, that population. And then the youth who, who have problematic sexual behaviors, those youth typically come in with, uh, those type of behavior outline and will refer them out to, to the program that does that specialized service.
How do you evaluate the effectiveness of those specialized services?
How do we evaluate the effectiveness?
Yeah.
Well, we, we see whether or not the kids are coming back to us. Um, we also, we have case managers that meet with the kids regularly and, and assess how they're doing in program and, and also speak with the providers around the effectiveness of their work.
How does aftercare for those youth differ from the aftercare of youth who don't, who didn't, um, require specialized services?
So the youth who are in the specialized program stay with the, that same core group. So the, the specialized population is trained and have, uh, the experience to work with this population. So for example, the problematic sexual behaviors will continue to get that treatment even when they're out in the community.
According to twenty twenty-three, CTH, RFP, and NSPs and LSPs facilities have more than doubled the capacity for male than for females. And there are no IDDs or. And there are no IDDs or PSB facilities for females at all. Are, are a disproportionate number of males in need of specialized services? And what can ACS do to expand this program to better serve the female population?
So, in our non-secure placement facilities, uh, for our female population, if they are exhibiting these type of behaviors, we are, we are able to refer out to the community or have a provider come into the facility to provide the services. Our limited secure facility is actually able to provide these services in-house.
Um, thank you. I have, and this was a question that I realized that I should have asked earlier. But when I was at one of the facilities, one of the thing the providers was telling me was that sometimes they have to turn over their facilities very quickly, so they'll be male. And then they'll get a call and be like, hey, we need you to turn over to male, and that has raised an issue, especially around staffing and capacity. Can you talk to me a little bit about, like, what that looks like and what that process is? Because I can't imagine being a male facility, and you know, obviously, your staff is going to reflect that, and then now being like, all right, you're turning over to a female facility. Um, could you talk about that process and what supports, um, are given to the provider when they have to have such a fast turnaround?
So, um, this is not in our close to home program, this is in our non-secure detention site. Um, they are, we only have one facility that is dedicated to female. Um, and if we do have to flip a site, it is in there, and we do talk to them, um, they do have to turn around.
So what you're saying that doesn't happen in close to homes, because that definitely was a close provider I was at, and they said that they've had to do that?
Yeah, I think you were talking with, uh, one of our providers in Brooklyn and.
It was not.
In the Bronx.
It, it wasn't, it was a close to home facility.
Yeah, no, we, it doesn't happen in close to home.
All right, I'm gonna come back to you, because you just said it on a record.
Come back. I, I am, I am a hundred percent confident.
Listen, I'm gonna text them right now, and I'm gonna ask, and while I'm texting, I would like to acknowledge Councilmember Rita Joseph, who has questions, and I'll come back to you with my question. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chair. Um, just have a few questions. When students return from co- um, close to home program, how often are they left without school placements?
I don't, I'm, don't understand. When the kids were, like, when they're.
Yeah, when they return from home, how long does it take for them to be placed back into schools?
No, they, they're placed immediately. We, we don't release the kids back into the community without being connected to school.
Okay. Um, do you track the number of days between students ex- um, exiting a close to home program and a student enrolling in school? I had a, I had a case, that's why I'm asking this question.
No, we, I don't, maybe the Department of Education may track it.
Say that again?
The Department of Education may have, may track that.
No, because I had a, I had a situation with a student, and it took a very long time for him to get back into school. It, his criminal justice-involved case was over, and he still was not placed in schools. So, um, so, sometimes they're sent to schools, is there, are you involved in their safety transfer? Let's say the problem they had in the school, and do you often place them back into the school if the school was the problem?
So, New York City Public Schools handles safety transfers and enrollment, so that.
Do you guys don't talk to each other at all in helping?
We do talk to them. We certainly talk to them, but we don't have access.
No, I know that.
Implementing those.
No, I'm just asking if there's a communication between you and New York City Public Schools in re-entering a student back into school where it was unsafe for them?
Yeah, DOE has, uh, on the District Seventy-Nine side, they do have the counselors who, primary role is to help the kid transition back into their community school.
Okay, thank you. While students are in close to home program, is it important that their families continue to have opportunities to be involved in their stu- in their child's education?
Yes, they, in our District Seventy-Nine school, they all have open school night, they can come to the school, talk to the teachers. Um, and they also participate in, in our monthly treatment team meetings, and they can ask questions around the school, the youth's education.
What are the percentages of students in your close to home program have IEPs?
Well, we, we would have to, um, get back to you on that question, but all of the kids that come in through District Seventy-Nine get a specialized IEP completed. But we can talk to DOE and get back to you.
Um, how can ACS work with New York City Public Schools to ensure students receive notice of IEP Special Education Plan Meeting once they're placed in, in placement? And when this, their schedule? Is that communicated back and forth with the parents?
So the, New York City Public Schools does that communication, because they're responsible for the IEPs and the SIPs. So that communication would come from New York City Public Schools.
And ACS has no involvement in that, is that correct?
But we could, we.
We might be made aware of it, but the, because we are, we don't handle the evaluations or those meetings, they're.
I know you're not part of the SBSD team, I know that. So I'm just asking, are you, you're in communications with New York City Public Schools around that, right?
Yes.
Okay. Um, how can ACS work with New York City Public Schools to ensure parents receive regular progress updates? Are you guys in communication?
So District Seventy-Nine is committed to communication with the parents, and they have, they have parent-teacher conferences. Um, parents have access to, they have counselors, guidance counselors, and social workers, um, who have ongoing communication with the parents. And the parents have access to their schooling through those counselors.
Why I'm saying, and why I'm asking those questions is because I think there's a, there's a lack of communication between the two agencies when both of you have a child in care. New York City Public Schools have the child in care, and so do you. So I just always think it's the lack of communication between the agencies.
So we have staff that are, that are present onsite at both, uh, Bronx Hope and Belmont. And so the communication is daily. Um, if a young person is, is struggling in school, the New York City Public School staff will, is in communication with our staff. So that issues may be addressed. Um, communication can always be improved.
Absolutely.
Um, but I think at, as of right now, there is a lot of communication. For the limited secure, um, students, they are actually attending school onsite in their facility. And so they, the, the school teachers and administrators have access to the facility, um, staff every day.
And are students being screened for dyslexia?
That is a DOE question.
And, and, but again, here's my, my thought process, it's both of you in care, the child is in your care in New York City Public Schools. So I'm, I'm thinking that the communication should be better between two agencies. So if I ask that question, you should be able to tell me how many students in your care have received dyslexia screening while they're in your, in your care. Okay, thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Chair.
All right, so I stand corrected, because let me tell you all right, I'm learning, and so you were correct, and I apologize, because clearly, I'm learning. I'm not an expert yet, but give me another four months, I will be, because it's NSP, LSP, it's too many Ps and Ls and all the things, so. But, um, thank you, um, I really appreciate your testimony today and answer these questions. And really look forward to continuous conversations around solutions, because I think that there's a lot of places that we can definitely be collaborating on and thinking about, um, different plans and, and, and some things that I think you've guys even admitted and talked to about where there's some holes and loops that I know you're trying to fill. So definitely want to, um, just say thank you for your testimony today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They're making us do all the work now, so now I have to read the little thing now. I now open the hearing for public testimony. I remind members of the public that this is a government proceeding and that, um, this shall be observed at all ti- decorum must, shall be observed at all times. As a member of the public, shall remain silent at all times. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recordings or photography is allowed while at the witness table. Further more, um, further, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony, but may submit transcripts of such recordings to the Sergeant-at-Arms in the conclusion of the hearing, um, of the hearing recording. If you wish to speak today at today's hearing, please fill out an appearance card with the Sergeant-at-Arms and wait to be recognized. When recognized, you will have two minutes to speak today, um, today's hearing topic, evaluating the close to home programming. If you have written statements or additional r- written testimony and you wish to submit the recording, please provide a copy of the testimony to the Sergeant-at-Arms. You may also email testimony to testimony@council.nyc.gov or other e- that's it. Within seventy-two hours of this hearing, audio and video recordings will not be accepted. At this time, I'll ask Kathleen, Joanne Hassan Bruta, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going to butcher these names, Elizabeth, um, Barnard, and Pedro Gonzalez. Whoever can start.
All right, just to clarify, you said two minutes, not three? Two minutes.
I said two minutes, and you might want to start, because it already started.
Okay, well, thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Elizabeth Bernard, and I am a staff attorney at Advocates for Children. Um, and so on the project, I represent court-involved, uh, youth as they navigate the significant challenges of receiving educational services, uh, both while they are in placement and as they are transitioning out of placement. Um, and so in recent years, we've seen some positive shifts in education services, youth received while in close to home. Um, and the quality of transition services once their close to home, uh, program, uh, mandates ends. However, despite some positive changes, there is still a need for improvement, um, in certain areas, including ensuring families get needed information about their child's educational progress while attending Passages Academy, and ensuring students have a safe and appropriate school to attend as they return home. Uh, currently, we, uh, I am assisting a family whose child spent eleven months in the close to home program. Um, and during the student's time in the program, the family never received progress reports, phone calls, emails, or notices of the child's progress while attending passages. And the DOE never gave the family an opportunity to attend IEP or Special Education Plan Meetings, or notify the family if the student had earned any credits. The family instead often made visits to the close to home site, where they were merely told that the student was doing okay, but could make improvements. Especially considering this specific student had an IEP and needed additional to support to succeed in school. The parent expressed her concern about the lack of information and uncertainty around the child's graduation status. To help keep students, uh, on track, it is important for DOE and ACS to ensure families are informed of their child's educational progress while in the close to home program. The city must also ensure that there is a better com- communication between ACS Passages Academy staff and the various DOE offices that help re-enroll students in school as they return ho- home. Often, we see a lag in the amount of time it takes for a student to receive an enrollment letter from DOE once they return home. In fact, we have seen students spend anywhere from three to two months waiting for a school placement.
Ten seconds.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Yes, good afternoon. Yes, good afternoon. My name is Jan Hassan Butera, and I am the Director of the Close to Home Program at SCL Family of Services. I want to thank Chair Stevens and all the members of the Committee of Children and Youth for allowing me to speak today. SCL currently operates five close to home programs throughout Queens and the Bronx. We utilize an evidence-based approach, the Missouri Approach, which has a strong focus on group dynamics and positive peer influence. There is a large focus on accountability, family dynamics, victim empathy, boundaries, communication, and healthy relationships. During placement, youths are engaged in a wide array of services, including medical, clinical services, casework counseling, mentorship, psychoeducational group meetings, education and vocational services. SCL has been fortunate to share in many successful outcomes for our youth and families. Close to Home has given youth the opportunity to become stronger community members through community service activities. A working relationship has been made with summer youth providers, helping youth to gain early work skills. Youth have been certified in OSHA and have received assistance finishing their education and gaining employment. SCL has fostered a strong partnership with Gallup New York City, allowing youth the unique opportunity to work with horses, participate in riding lessons, and volunteer with younger youth with disabilities. Additional highlights include youth registering to vote and voting for the first time, exposure to new and diverse educational, recreational, and cultural activities, which help them span- expand their horizons. Youth have also had the opportunity to perform at Carnegie Hall, be members of their student council, and display their artwork at exhibits. SCL is especially proud to have a former client, James, join our workforce as a youth specialist. James was in our program from two thousand fifteen to two thousand sixteen. He worked extremely hard and made incredible progress. Today, he is a role model, incredible messenger to the youth, and an inspiration to all of us who know him. His journey proves that the change is indeed possible for the young people of the close to home program if they are given the opportunity. There is, there is still a need for this important program. Youth need and deserve treatment, not incarceration. They have experienced.
Ten seconds.
Neglect and opportunity. The whole, close to home program addresses all of these areas and does so much more. On behalf of the young people I serve, thank you for my opportunity to speak today.
Thank you.
Hello, I am Caitlin Greco, Director of Prevention, Juvenile Justice and Equity at Kafka. Kafka represents more than a hundred nonprofit child welfare agencies across New York State, including the five agencies that provide close to home programming here in New York City. Thank you, Chair and Council, for the opportunity to provide testimony today. We also have submitted a written testimony, a little bit more comprehensive. Uh, Close to Home was created as a commitment from the city to keep juvenile justice-involved people close to their families, communities, and support systems. Moreover, Close to Home creates or operates as a trauma-informed setting, acknowledging that young people deserve the opportunity to be equipped with the tools needed to create healthy choices. Currently, the young people in Close to Home programming need more support and expansive level of services than ever. The ripple effect of programs closing down due to the pandemic, coupled with new legislation, has led to older youth in care exhibiting more complex needs, such as continuous justice involvement, substance abuse, violent behaviors, and gang or gun involvement. Today, we uplift the following priorities as identified by our member agencies. One, invest in pay parity and workforce enhancements. As we know, a lot of our agencies lose, uh, their workforce to government agencies due to the high pay, as mentioned earlier. Two, the city needs a contingency plan for, in place to address the growing needs for additional capacity and demands for close to home. The system is set to reduce capacity from two-hundred-and-one to one-hundred-and-forty-seven slots when the new contracts are effective July one. Since the release of the RFP, the census has continued to rise with a forty-six percent increase in emissions and sixty-one percent increase in close to home census calendar year-to-date, January through February. To meet the demand of increases in census in the past, programs have been asked to add beds to increase capacity. This is not always a feasible solution due to staff vacancies and other barriers. Three, invest in addressing safety concerns in facilities and for young people transitioning back to the community. We ask the city to invest in and expand de-escalation trainings offered to all facility staff, so staff are equipped with tools to mitigate violence while upholding a trauma-informed environment. We also ask for the city to create, enhance, and expand tailored programming, especially for young people of gang or gun involvement. And then our fourth, uh, priority is the enhanced flexibility for new contracts, making sure that funding matches mandates, as well as the ability for agencies to meet basic needs of young people in care.
Thank you.
Good afternoon to this committee. My name is Pedro Gonzalez, former veteran of the United States Armed Forces, father of two. Um, I am well aware that in this testimony, we're focused on the youth aspect for DYCD. However, um, I've been reaching out to the city council's office about a particular matter that, um, I wanted to raise some concerns about with ACS. Um, the Administration for Children's Services had been involved in my case for about seven years now. Um, there are some good things that the agency has done to support my family. However, the agency history with my family has been very contentious. So I wanted to raise some concerns that I have as a father. For one, I want to thank this committee and Althea Stevens. Um, I'm also from the Bronx. Last year, in twenty-twenty-three, my children were removed more than four times from the home. Um, there has been an uptick since twenty-three in emergency ten-twenty-four removals from the home without court intervention. Oftentimes, ACS has case conference my case time and time over. Oftentimes, ACS has case conference my case time and time over again. And even in the deputy director's case study conference that was discussed that my family model is one of the best models to be used for family reunification approaches. Oftentimes, I understand that it takes a village to raise children. However, not always everyone in the village agrees on what's best for the children. But I believe firmly that it is the responsibility, first and foremost, of the parents who are willing and want to care for the children. As such, I would ask three things of this committee. One, what can this committee do to ask ACS to push the agenda of family reunification for the families? First and foremost, that should be the priority. It is more of a priority than even property. Two, what can be done to limit the interactions, to make those interactions with the families much more positive than adversarial? Nine times out of ten, a lot of these family court cases can be settled outside of the family court without burdening or encompassing these cases more than it already has. Three, what can be done for ACS to train its employees and managers on how to approach cases on a case-by-case paces with the facts? I believe each case has its own caveats, and as such, each case should be thoroughly looked at. I believe ACS should also conduct frequent case study conferences on each family. I also want to thank this committee for taking the time to hear me. I am a concerned father. I wouldn't be here standing before everyone expressing these concerns that I have if I didn't genuinely care. I have been dealing with this situation since, I want to say, at least 2019. It is now 2024. Again, I want to thank you, Althea Stevens, the ranking committee member, and other members of this committee for hearing me out with my concerns. Thank you.
Well, thank you to this panel. And one, I just want to say, Mr. Pedro, thank you for being here today. And it's okay that it's not related to the topic. I'm allowed to pass, although I'm not supposed to say that. But I think that it is important, and it is very connected. And I don't want to go into the details of this case, but I do have staff here who, I'll get your information so we can talk more. But this has been a concern that I've actually heard from a number of parents around not feeling like their cases have been heard in a real way. I have a friend who had a case, and some of the stuff did not make sense. She was a licensed social worker and almost got her license taken away because of a situation that it didn't really make sense. And so, I was able to escalate it, but that should not be the case. And so, definitely, my staff who is here will get your information, because I don't want us to have an open discussion about your case and your situation. And ACS is also still here, and so, we'll definitely all get together to have a conversation about how to best move forward.
I have one more question. What else can this committee do to, when NYPD involvement is necessary, what can be done to not just impartially protect the family from harassment or an adversarial conflict, but also to remind every party that even the parents have rights? Can this committee make it very poignant to state that there should be a parental bill of rights provided to the family on first contact with ACS?
Absolutely, and we already have some of that. That's already in place, so those things should be happening. And that is something that we'll definitely be working on. And so, again, I don't want to go into the specifics around your case and go into details, but my staff is here. They will get your information. We'll continue the conversation. And I see ACS staff is still here, and they'll definitely talk to you as well to continue this conversation. Because, you know, I think some of the things you're saying are general, but definitely want to get more to the specifics to be more helpful. Thank you. Ms. Bernard, I have so many questions for you. I was reading through your testimony, and I know you talked about there was a situation where the young person had their IEP reevaluated. Could you tell me a little bit more details about that? Because I was under the impression that for IEP specifically, that parents would have to sign off on that. So, was IEP changed? Was there conversations? Could you tell me a little bit more information about that, please?
Right. So, as we understand it, when a young person enters a close-to-home program with an IEP, there has to be a meeting that happens within seven days, which basically will kind of transition the IEP into something called an SEP, which is the Special Education Plan. And this will provide every service, or some of the service, or equivalent services that are in the IEP in an SEP. Basically, what this means to us is that a lot of the services that are available to a young person with an IEP that are in their community, in a public school, are not necessarily available within Passages while they're in close to home. And so, this is supposed to mirror what an IEP would look like. And so, it's our understanding that parents are supposed to be in communication with Passages staff about such meetings, so that they can agree or disagree to what is being changed or what is being reevaluated in that young person's SEP.
Are parents not required to be a part of that meeting? Or is this something that is happening without parents' knowledge or being present?
So, in our experience, parents have expressed that they have no idea what's happening. They're not included in those meetings, and so, obviously, this is a large problem.
So, just full transparency, the providers were suggesting that I visit the school before I came, and I just was not able to fit it in my schedule. So, it is on my list of things to do to kind of get a better understanding of what's happening in like Bronx Hope and the other schools that they have. But this is definitely something I'm very interested in to continue to dig into. And then, you mentioned later on in your testimony, because I know you didn't get to read it all, but I read it. You mentioned later on in your testimony about families in this transition out of the facility and having idle time. But I know we talked extensively today about the transition plans and all these things, but you're experiencing and seeing that young people aren't being placed into schools. And I see that you had one young person who was actually jumped when they returned from a closing home program, because they were sent back to unsafe schools. So, is ACS not coordinating safety transfers with DOE so that students can go to new schools when they are going to close to homes? Can you talk to me a little bit about that?
Sure. So, the young person who was sent back to an unsafe school was jumped within the second day of his attendance. At that time, obviously, the young person did have some of the resources that were mentioned. So, I want to say Fair Futures Coach, a slew of other folks. However, a lot of these individuals don't have the knowledge and resources about how to make those safety transfers happen, and so, that is why...
That's my question. So, is ACS and DOE not coordinating those safety transfers so that when they're coming out of the close-to-homes programs and being returned home, that they're automatically going to a new safety transfer? Is that not happening?
I think the issue is that there are not a lot of informed conversations around making sure the re-entry is safe, right? Like, so, we're just saying, okay, well, what are the needs of this young person? What grade? How many credits have they earned? Let's put them in a school that's in their neighborhood and available. However, there needs to be more informed conversation with the young person around, like, is this school safe? Are the needs being able to be appropriately met? How do we make sure that young people returning to schools are safe in actuality? I think that is more of the issue. Conversations are being had, but I don't think they're targeted and intentional around safety. And that is a problem, considering we know the barriers around safety, specifically for young people who are court-involved.
Thank you. This is really helpful. And like I said, I am trying to get on my schedule to get to these schools so I can get more information. I just got the committee in January, and I'm on a fact-finding mission, because I take this very seriously. So, this is definitely something I'm going to continue to have on my watch and definitely be in contact with you to get into some more details around some of the things that you're seeing on the ground, just so we can, again, look for solutions. And if there's loopholes and there's things that we need to readjust and think about, I'm all for it, and let's go for it. And I know my lovely folks at ACS is happy to hear all of our great solutions. I believe Councilmember Williams has some questions, and I believe Councilmember Osay is with us remotely. Councilmember Williams?
Yeah, I just wanted to know if anyone has, any of the folks who are familiar with Close-to-Home, have any just initial reactions from ACS testimony? I think it's always interesting to hear the testimony from the agency, and not that you don't believe the agency, but, you know, I'm out on the grounds, you're on the grounds, and so, you see it in real time. So, just wondering if you just had any, like, general response back to the testimony and the things that you heard?
So, like I said, in my testimony, I do think that there have been improvements, and I want to give space to that. I think there has been, across the board, some improvements. However, this population is very complicated, and I think it takes staff who are culturally competent, who understand the navigation of, well, we're talking about young people throughout the Bronx and Brooklyn, what their needs are and how to address those needs head-on. I do think that, you know, many of the things that were stated are like more data-driven than day-to-day, like, how are we creating concrete solutions and plans? Like you said, I want to be solution-oriented. And as an advocate who's seeing family issues from day-to-day, I know that case-by-case, there are a lot of things that aren't being addressed and that need addressing. And I think those are more complicated conversations that need to be had. And I think oftentimes, we think very macro instead of micro. And I think that's really a large part of the gaps that we're seeing.
Yeah, I do want to give ACS credit. I know that they have been talking with providers, but I think the system just looks very different now, right? Between the pandemic, Raise the Age, you know, just other policies. We're just seeing older young people, and we're also seeing more complex behaviors. And I think, you know, kids are entering the system, and the system needs to adapt, and that unfortunately is way slower than the kids are entering, right? So, there's just more conversation that needs to be had, more focus on safety. A lot of our young people in the system are gang or gun involved, even if they don't specifically have those charges. And when they're returning back to the community, if they had conflict entering, you know, whatever facility they're in, that conflict often remains and awaits for them. And it's putting young people at risk of being a victim of violence. And I know that our providers are doing the best that they can to ensure safety for young people in their care, but it's really hard. It takes more than just, you know, what they have in their capacity. It takes community help as well. It also takes more budgetary flexibilities to help, like, young people who are transitioning out of facility to meet their basic needs, right? That's like one way to ensure safety, is just making sure a young person knows where their food is coming from or where they're going to sleep. So, I think these conversations are being had, but, you know, there's space for more improvement as well.
And as a provider for twelve years, I can say that we've forged really strong relationships with ACS and with our DOE partners. And it does take a village to do anything, to find a youth a safe school, to help them in an unsafe community. And I would absolutely say that those strong relationships we've had, do we always agree? No. But can we come to the table and can we hash it out? Do we come to a mutually agreed-upon solution? Yes. And all of us have the same want for our young people. We want them to leave and be healthy, safe, productive, and thrive. So, I can say that through the years, we've developed that strong partnership with many ACS and our DOE staff. And we have had safety transfers to schools. We've had where youth would write a letter saying, "I don't want to go to this school." And we've all put our heads, our collective heads together and hearts together and found a way to make it happen.
Well, that's encouraging, because what I'm hearing is ACS isn't entirely bad, but there are some complex issues. But I do, it is nice and encouraging to hear that there seems to be levels of communication, which I think is sometimes like the biggest issue. So, that's good. Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you. I will say this. People have said providers have been very kind towards the work that they've been doing with ACS. So, that is encouraging even to hear from this panel as well. So, but they still got work to do. I'm not letting them off the hook. It's my job, but, you know. But thank you guys so much. Appreciate this panel.
Thank you.
For the next panel, I'm going to be calling up Annie Mingas and Dionis Fernandez.
Hello. Thank you, Chair Stevens, and members of the Children and Youth Committee for the opportunity to testify. My name is Annie Mingas, and I'm the VP of Government and Community Relations at Good Shepherd Services. Good Shepherd has a non-secure detention in the Bronx, two non-secure placement facilities in Brooklyn, and we also have aftercare and Fair Futures Services. I want to focus my testimony speaking to the challenges we are having, while also sharing some resources that could help us. I want to stress that while we are facing challenges, we in no way want to see Close-to-Home becoming an extension of Crossroads and Horizon. Close-to-Home began in 2012 to support younger youth between the ages of twelve and sixteen. And as ACS mentioned today, given Raise the Age, we are now seeing older youth, which require a different intervention. I served on the Raise the Age campaign and have done advocacy for years at the state level to help get Raise the Age dollars to New York City. That said, in the absence of state funding, we need resources to support the needs of older youth, including programming offerings that are tailored to support their interest. Thank you, Chair, for raising the staffing issues we are facing. ACS has similar positions, offering bonuses, annual cost increases, a city pension, and thirteen thousand dollars more than what the average provider is able to offer. We cannot compete with these offerings. On the comment that youth are housed with other youth their age, with the new RFP awards, and the fact that we will only have two-girl programs across the city, housing youth of similar age will not be possible. While our staff are trained in safety crisis management, Sanctuary, and Missouri, they always welcome additional supports. Providers can use additional resources our city already has access to, like de-escalation techniques that our Cure Violence staff have. When possible, given proximity and also credible messenger relationships, and with additional funding, partnerships with the Cure Violence teams to help youth return home safely is something that is possible. And to remain engaged with Cure Violence and the crisis management system so that they have additional support system. Programs like Learning to Work, who can best support youth who are behind in school and still want to obtain a high school diploma, is another thing.
Ten seconds.
We also want to address the root causes that have brought youth to the system, including food and housing insecurities, and supports that ensure that physical safety, that they have physical safety upon returning home. Job training, certification programs, so that young people have employment after. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you.
Hello, how you doing today? My name is Dionis Fernandez, and I have three years fighting to be part of my child's life. And I am the founder and CEO of a movement called Father Speak Up, which is a nonprofit organization for fathers that are fighting to be part of their children's life. It's very important for the father to be there as much as the mother, and as fathers, we are not getting the justice we deserve to be part of our children's life. I'm teaming up with another organization, which is in Reckless Island, and I'm voluntarily working in there to help fathers in there, how they could be able to reunite with their children too. Right now, I have two-hundred-and-ninety-one fathers that's part of my movement, that I'm helping them. I started doing this in New York City, and now, I'm traveling out of state because it is happening all over. I have a big platform. In the last thirty days, I have two-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand people that reached my account. I have twenty-thousand people that are supporting my movement, and we're going to continue speaking up and become one loud voice so we could be able to get the justice that we deserve. So, what I do is I interview fathers that's been going to court, paying child support, paying lawyers, and doing everything we can as fathers to be part of our children's life, and we still don't get the justice we deserve. So, what I do is while I interview fathers, we speak about everything we got going on, but we just don't speak about the mother, because we want the mother to be there as well. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I remember you from our budget hearing, so thank you for being here and the work that you do, because, you know, I think it is important that we're uplifting fathers. I know even in council, Councilmember Riley and even Councilmember Youssef have been doing a lot of work around, like, trying to promote fatherhood. I know, I think, even at the budget hearing, I told you, DYCD, they have a father initiative, and definitely want to think about how to connect you with them to also do collaborate, because I think that is something that we do not talk enough about, the struggles of the father, especially around custody and things like that. So, thank you for being here again today, and definitely want to figure out how to make sure we're connecting you to some of the services. And Ms. Mingas, question. And I think your organization is a perfect example of how you guys are doing multiple things, because now, we're like best friends, because I see you all the time, because literally, you have programs on the DYCD side and on the ACS side. And can you talk about, and even you talked about the LCW program piece, which is like the DOE stuff. Can you talk about some of the challenges that your agency faces because you have all these different multiple funding streams, and they're always talked about in buckets? And some ideas you guys might have around, like, how the interconnection would be much more helpful, because in the way it's now, it's all very separate? Because I feel like I speak to you about different things separately, because that is just how it's been set up. So, can you talk a little bit about that, please?
Thank you, Chair. And I think, like, by nature, these programs are siloed. And one of the things that we have been trying to do at Good Shepherd, and I know that other agencies are trying to as well, is to break down those silos and start to think about, like, what programs are young people touching? How can we deepen their relationships in the positive programs? Acknowledging kind of like where they've been. Programs like Learning to Work are working with young people that are previously homeless in the juvenile justice system. They're working with this population. They've figured out... They're working with this population. They've figured out how to stay connected with them. One of the things that we want to make sure is that they're moving from a high-touch program to another high-touch program, which is why we're talking about Cure Violence and the crisis management system, why we're talking about Learning to Work and those advocate counselors, and really thinking about like, what does that continuum look like for us? It's work that we're doing, and of course, I think that all of the providers are trying to figure out, like, how do we stay connected in the lives of young people through extended programs that we're offering? Because once they have built that trust with us, they want to be able to stay with us. So we, you know, in the absence of like not having a program, it's like, how are we working with other community organizations through our aftercare program to engage with them so that there's a transition? And they start to see both of us together, like we are here to serve and to help you as you transition.
Yeah, and I think that it's important, right? And why I highlighted even earlier in the testimony of, of all of these, you guys are the same providers. It's not our fault that the agencies are, are working differently, right? And so I think, you know, we really need to be thinking about how are we creating synergy amongst the city agencies in the same way some of the nonprofits are doing? Because again, you just mentioned, your, your agency has Learn to Work contract. That's with DOE. I'm sure you guys have community schools. That's DOE. And then you have L S Ps, N S Ps, because all the Ps, you know, foster care. You also have after-school, so that's D Y C D. So it's all these different programs, and in the same way that you have to figure out how to work in synergy, you know, it's really going to be important how the city agencies are doing the same. Because, you know, they often are like, we're meeting and we're touching, but it's not making sense on the continuation of programs and services. And so I definitely want us to continue that conversation. I do not have any more questions. Thank you guys both for being here.
Thank you.
Okay. So we are going to move to remote testimony. If there's anyone who wishes to testify in person, please see the Sergeant of Arms. I see no one, so we'll move to, to Zoom testimony. So right now, I'm going to call Judith Harris.
Time is starting.
Thank you, Chair Stevens and committee. My name is Judith Harris. I'm an attorney at the Legal Aid Society Juvenile Rights Practice, and I represented youth and juvenile delinquency proceedings for about 15 years in the Bronx National Court. I also refer you to our written testimony. Regarding plans to reduce close-to-home capacity yet expand detention and horizon, instead of this disruption and expense, the city should press the state to make changes to allow the use of close-to-home beds for juvenile detention purposes. The children who are placed in close-to-home are almost all black and brown from under-resourced neighborhoods. They should not be incarcerated if they can be better served, as they usually can be, in the community. We must continue to reduce the number of children in placement by expanding alternative displacement programs. Key concerns with close-to-home and aftercare. We must provide older youth with G E D programs and vocational training at every close-to-home facility. Since Raise the Age, close-to-home has seen an increase in older teens, yet there's not enough availability of G E D programs and job training at all facilities. Some have none. We must improve staff retention at close-to-home facilities. This has been discussed a lot today. I won't go into it more since time is limited. At times, legal aid staff have difficulty reaching close-to-home staff, including clinical, and haven't been notified of key transitional meetings. Also, access to interpreters other than Spanish must be consistently provided for in-person meetings and services with families or guardians. Aftercare should be strengthened with better connection to educational, vocational, mental health, and other services in the community. Some clients, younger clients, would benefit from anti-gun and anti-gang violence programming but aren't getting these types of referrals. Crossover youth who are in close-to-home but also have foster care, or also in foster care, need better planning. The failure to timely and adequately plan can result in longer close-to-home facility stays because of foster home placement or foster placement not set up in time for aftercare. This should never happen. Again, more alternative displacement program slots are needed. And also, with regard to crossover youth, ACS case planners on the youth child protective case often lack understanding of close-to-home timeframes. Thank you.
Thank you. We now call Daphne Torres Douglas.
Time is starting. Leading to the committee, and thank you for the opportunity to testify. I'm Daphne Torres Douglas, the Vice President at the Children's Village, Harlem, Downing, and New House. We provide one of the broadest continuums of trauma-informed, evidence-based family support interventions, interventions that focus on family reunification and keeping at-risk youth at home, in school, and with people who love them. We are early advocate of close-to-home, and we remained active in serving teens and families since legislation was passed. The changes have been dramatic, and for many families, life-altering. For many, placement is a result of disconnection from community, family, school, and mental health symptoms from trauma. Close-to-home, with its emphasis on therapeutic rather than punitive approaches pre and post placement, has dramatically reduced the length of stay in placement and increased successful reunification with family. This requires inclusion of family. Engagement in close-to-home begins immediately upon entry and follows youth into the community at discharge. When done right, our therapeutic and financial investments in families provide validation, safety, and restore humanity. While therapy that focuses on social and emotional development is fundamental to our approach, we also provide financial assistance when finances and poverty present barriers to success. This support takes the form of rigorous evidence-based aftercare services, life coaching, mentoring, to help mitigate life stresses that weigh heavily on young people and lend extra support to youth who are navigating high school enrollment, college applications, employment searches. Engaging in people work successfully requires strong workforce that is skilled and invested and not distracted by their own poverty. ACS counselors still earn much more and get better benefits. This impacts our nonprofit sector ability to hire and retain great employees. We also ask that New York City simplify the budget process and invoice to make reimbursement faster and more predictable. Agencies like ours struggle with millions in outstanding cash flow and spend hundreds of thousands on interest every year due to borrowing to cover delayed payments. Program operation in this manner is not sustainable. Everyone loses. The demand for close-to-home is increasing. We access need to renew and expand its investment in this important transformation and intervention. Thank you, and I'll submit my written testimony.
Thank you. We now call Kymra Jones.
Thank you.
Alex Stein.
Time is starting.
With neither of them being online, I would like to just say thank you to ACS for being here and having their testimony. Like stated multiple times, I think that there's a lot of places where we can think about solutions, and even from the providers today, and even testimony we heard from folks. I think we're moving in the right direction, but there is still a lot of work to be done. And so with that, I would like to adjourn this hearing.